Everyone, welcome back to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is November 16th. It's 6:00 PM and this meeting is called back to order. The clerk would please call the roll and establish quorum.
Yes. Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay. For item 45, this is the 2021 redistricting discussion of proposed draft district boundary maps.
I'm here.
Okay. Yes, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Just a point of order. I've been approached, as I think perhaps all of us or some of us, others have been approached in recent days by members of the public that are engaged in this process to, they've respectfully asked that the order of presentation be reconsidered in terms of when the public and when the consultant makes their presentation so as to minimize the amount of wait time on the phones. And so I would respectfully ask the chair's consideration for that this evening and have us do exactly that. Thank you.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you saying?
To have the, have the.
Take public comment first?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think that's fine. Maybe Natasha, I know you were gonna give a presentation, maybe you could just do a brief opening and then we'll open public comment and then we'll move into the other.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna.
Okay, now.
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'm Natasha Drain, your Governmental Relations and Legislative Officer. We are here tonight to continue the board's discussion on redrawing the County Board of Supervisors district lines. On November 2nd, this board provided feedback on the draft maps. Those were 201, 202, and 203 provided by Doug Yolcom with NDC. We also heard from members of the public on these draft maps. Following the board meeting on November 2nd, the county held a virtual workshop on November 6th to receive additional input on the initial draft maps. The workshop was well-attended with more than 30 participants who were very engaged. The county has also received 183 written public comments since the November 2nd board meeting. Doug Yolcom took your feedback and the public's feedback and has provided a new draft map titled "NDC 204," which he will speak to tonight. Also of note, Doug attended the Rancho Cordova City Council meeting last night at the city's request. He'll share with you the council's action, which is different than what was communicated by the city to the board on November 2nd. As a reminder for the public, they can find more information about redistricting on the county's redistricting website at redistricting.saccounty.net. That concludes my remarks, Madam Chair. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay.
Can I just have a question? So if we're gonna take public comment first, is the intention to close the public comment period at the end of comments or leave it open throughout the meeting and allow an additional round of comments after the consultant's presentation?
Yes, chair's prerogative.
Madam Chair, we're gonna be back in session tomorrow anyway, so I think we're gonna keep public hearing, to your point, maybe duly tonight, but I think, as I understood it, that to, you know, hear from folks before we all weigh in, get the benefit of that information. But I would, I guess, I'd be of the opinion that public hearing's gonna remain open for remainder of tonight, Madam Council, as well as through tomorrow until we get to, if we get to decision point tomorrow, right?
I would agree with that. However, I would, I think it's worth reminding the public to let them know that they, there's one opportunity tonight for public comment, there's one opportunity tomorrow for public comment. In other words, you know, please don't call in at the beginning.
Good point.
Hear the presentation, hear us deliberate, then call in, same person call in again for another bite at the.
Yeah, good point. I think that was to Chris's question too.
Thanks.
Okay. So we'll leave it open, but please call in one time and then you'll have another opportunity tomorrow.
And that, Madam Chair, is not because we don't want to have public comments, to give everyone an opportunity to comment should they want.
Plus, we have more time. We'll be back tomorrow. Unless we make some swift decision, which is not looking good for that. Okay. So I do not have any public comment in chambers. Do we have any comments on the phone?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have about 14 at this point. So I'll ask the staff to transfer the first caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Olivia Landa Shanaz, and I oppose 203 and support 201 and 202.
Does that conclude your comments, sir?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, I would like to oppose number 203, and I'm for 201 and 202. My name is Betty Brooks.
I had trouble hearing that.
My name is Betty Brooks. I wanna oppose number 203, and I'm for 201 and 202.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Betty Williams. I'm the President of the Greater Sacramento NAACP, and I am calling to say that I oppose the map of 203, and I would like to support the map for 201 and 202. We do not want our vote diluted and our presentation diluted as far as our diverse community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
I'm calling about item 45, the redistricting.
Yes, please, please start with your comments.
On 203, no. 201, yes. 202, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
My comment is no on map 203, and yes on 201 and 202.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
My name is Gloria Massey, and I oppose the map 203, and I am in support of maps 201 and 202. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Excellent. So my comments are that I oppose, so I'm saying no to, to the map for number 203. Did you hear that, ma'am?
Yes, we hear you, sir.
Secondly, I'm saying yes, Y-E-S, to the map for 201 and 202.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, I'd like to raise my opposition to the redistricting as basically a ploy to basically undermine the voters' hearts and minds and the citizenry of Sacramento. It's just a scheme, and I wish that they understand that, you know, Republicans, Democrats, whatever, is voted in, not schemed in.
You only got two minutes, so you gotta fit that in. No, two.
Do not want 203, Sac County, or any of the redistricting that that is proposed. And yes on 201 and 202.
Thank you, sir. I hear yes on 201, yes on 202, and no on 203.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your comments, sir?
Yes, it does, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, my name is Michelle Martin Neal. I'm a Sacramento native. I'm gonna say no on 203, and I support yes on 201 and 202. That's basically all I have to say. I come to a lot of the meetings, and I'm a community activist and a retired state worker of 41 years, so I'm definitely paying attention. Thank you very much for your time, and may God bless you.
Thank you. God bless you also.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Monique Johnson. I oppose map 203, and I support map 201 and 202. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, my name's Tobin R. Moore, and I, I just disagree with 203, so I'm saying no on 203, and yes on 202 and 201. And the reason, the reason being is because we noticed that how different areas are put in different categories so that the council person or the person running for office gets his or her votes. And, and so because of that, I think it's not keeping a fair playing field. And, you know, I think that politically, we should, we should do what the people want us to, you want, you know, not try to finagle our way in to do what our agenda might be. Okay? And so that's one of the reasons why I'm saying what I'm saying and talking about what I'm talking about. And, and, and just kind of go off, off record into, into another part, I think we need to focus in on our unhoused veterans and unhoused people that are here in Sacramento. So I started a nonprofit which is Get Back Inc. So if you, if you like, you can go to get, www.getbackinc.org. And I think that topic is, is really important. I think it's imperative that we do what we can for our troops. Our veterans have served, and we need to serve them as, as the ones that come back from, from military service. So, you know, I don't have much more to say other than the fact that I would like for us to do a better job here in Sacramento. And that's my whole goal. I don't wanna point the finger and, you know, put the blame on anybody. I just think that we need to work together cohesively, and I, I think that's what Sacramento needs, okay?
Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you for your service, sir.
Well, yeah, you know, and if you have any people that are interested in helping out, have them go to my website, which is www.getbackinc.org. That's getbackinc.org. And I mean, we could use.
Okay, thank you. Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
Yeah, I have nothing more to say. I just would like to say this much, and I'm gonna let it go. I'd like for the city and council members to, to participate, to help our troops out, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I oppose 203 and support 201 and 203. And 202, rather. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Tammy Dramer. I'm a 25-year resident of Area 3, and I'm calling in favor of maps 101, 102, and 103. And a further request would be that regardless of which maps you decide upon, please do not split College Greens and College Glen. We are one neighborhood, we all go to the same schools, and shop at the same grocery stores. So thank you again for all of your work.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay. I start now?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Jo Souvenir, and my husband, Rod Neistrom, who's now deceased, and I lived in South Sacramento approximately 25 years ago, and I now live in another area of Sacramento County. But I'm very familiar with South Sacramento, South Sacramento, and that's what I'm, wanna talk to tonight primarily. I stand in support of keeping communities together, especially the Asian-American Pacific Island communities. These communities, they, you know, they shop together, they buy groceries together, their children go to schools together, they, they have so much in common that I think it would be foolish to separate them and put them with another county that is far and distant that they have little in common with. And that's all I wanna say.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Velma Sykes. I'm calling to state my opposition to map 203. However, I'm in support of map 201 and map 202.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
I'm calling about the redistricting, and I am for the redistricting of 201 and 202. I am against 203.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Rena, and I'm a resident of Natomas, Sacramento, California. As a member of the Punjabi community, I want to voice my support for maps 101, 102, 103, and 107. These maps, these maps allow for my Punjabi community to be kept together in the same district. The Punjabi community of Sacramento County predominantly lives in Natomas, Antelope, West Sacramento, South Sacramento, and Elk Grove areas. And as such, it is important for us that the Natomas and Antelope areas where Punjabi people live is kept together in the same district, as well as the entire Elk Grove and South Sacramento area where most of our Punjabi people live is kept in the same district. I think keeping these two areas in northern Sacramento County and southern Sacramento County will allow for our community to advocate together for their needs and concerns, and it will allow us to receive important services as well as make it possible for our community to elect candidates of our choice. My request for keeping these areas in the same districts also address the spike in hate crimes and incidents that unfortunately have been happening against the Punjabi community and the larger Asian-American community. And so I hope that, you know, with keeping these areas together in the same districts, our communities can, you know, rally together in the event of new such hate crimes and incidents in the future, and it will allow us to find solutions in a more efficient manner. So once again, I respectfully demand for maps 101, 102, 103, and 107 to be adopted. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Hi caller.
Good evening.
Yes, okay. Please start with your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Supervisor. My name is Chaveng. My family and I are homeowners and residents of the Vineyard area. We are proud, we are proud to be a part of the Sacramento-Mong American, Asian-American, immigrant refugees, and Black Indigenous people of color communities in the county. I wanna start by thanking the demographer and Courtney Bailey for their commitment to this redistricting process. As someone who is deeply involved in the state redistricting work, I know the commitment and great task it is. I hope that my comments are valuable to you all as you continue to do your line drawings. This process is important because I know how it impacts my community, my family, my community, and myself for the next 10 years. Therefore, I submitted comments, committed two hours to last Saturday's workshop as I, so that I can uplift the needs of Asian-American communities of interest in, in South Sacramento and Elk Grove. I am disappointed to see that even after all that, the draft map still disregards the interests of the Asian-American populations in the county. Let me emphasize the need for you all to review the data for percent CVA for Asian-American and spoken Asian languages at home in the south part of the county to make sure you keep communities together. Many Asian-American families who live in the city of Elk Grove have roots in South Sacramento, where the largest Asian-American population in Sacramento lives. Between the two regions, the Asian-American community is linked to each other by either traveling for family, dining, college, work, business, or other purposes. Elk Grove and South Sacramento have ties between school districts. As the Elk Grove Unified School District overlaps the South Sacramento city limits, the 63,000-plus students in Elk Grove Unified School District make up of both South Sacramento and Elk Grove City youth and their families. We cannot say that, we can't say the same for the city of Rancho Cordova, which has its own school district. The Elk Grove Asian-American community shares much more in common with South Sacramento than they do with any other region in the county.
You have 15 seconds.
In all, I strongly encourage the Board of Supervisors to revise your maps and place Elk Grove City in entirety and South Sacramento, including up to Florin, across to Vineyard, together to the best, best extent as possible, as shown, as shown in public map 101. I know we can do better. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Julie Chapman, and I'm calling to encourage the Board of Supervisors to keep Elk Grove and South Sacramento communities together in the maps. I'm calling to oppose map 203. That would result in diluting the communities of color and their voice in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Teresa Lawrence. I am a longtime resident of Elk Grove, South County, and I have since moved from that residence, but I am employed and pastoring in that community of Vineyard. And I believe that we, as a community, need to remain together. We need together because we worship together, we play together, we go to school together, and we are collectively a community that has been there since I was in school at Florin High School. I ask that you consider maps 101 and 102 to be able to keep that community together. We have a strong Asian-Pacific Islander community that also needs to be kept together, and I think it would be a disservice to us as a community if you separated us and moved us apart. It is central to the things that have constantly happened in our society with people of color that they have been separated and marginalized. Keeping them together keeps them strong, keeps them vibrant, and keeps them viable. Please, thank you for your time and for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, supervisors. My name is Omega Bur Gonzalez, and I am a Sacramento County resident. I live in District 1. I stand in strong support of community members in South County, especially our AAPI, AAPI brothers and sisters, who have gone through enough this last, this last couple of years if we haven't learned anything. I think that we need to, we've learned we need to listen to our communities. Our AAPI community has been very clear that they wanna be kept together. Communities thrive when they're kept together, they're able to advocate, they have a strong advocacy for their needs, they're able to receive important services and investments, and quite frankly, elect the candidates that would best reflect them and their values. And so, understanding what our AAPI brothers and sisters have gone through, it, it's, it's just, it underscores that importance of empowering their community within public policy. And so with that, I wanna thank you for listening to my public comment and respectfully ask that our communities be kept together, including by keeping Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sac together to the best extent possible, as shown in maps 101, 102, and 103. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Timothy Irvine, and I live in Natomas, and I'm calling in regards to the upcoming redistricting. I know that this is a very important topic, and you've probably gotten lots and lots of feedback from all sides. I just wanna let you know that I support, to the maximum extent possible, working with maps 101, 102, or 103. Support maps 101, 102, or 103. And this is because I think it's extremely important that the Board of Supervisors has geographically contiguous districts in the future, and that the Board of Supervisors does not split up communities of interest. does not split up communities of interest. I know and I work with a lot of people in the API community, particularly in South SAC in the South County, down off of Florin and Elk Grove. And I think it's extremely important that these API communities not be split up and that they be kept together. So again, this is Timothy Irvine. I'm a constituent. I'm in Natomas. But I'm calling in support of geographically contiguous communities in maps, specifically 101, 102, and 103, and not splitting up API communities. Thank you very much, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. Good evening supervisors. My name is Michelle Wright, and I'm a Sacramento County resident. I'm calling in support, heeding the call of our community members in the South County who are Asian American Pacific Islander, and who are asking that their communities be kept together with Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento in the same district. As we all know, communities of interest are a large criterion in the redistricting process. So I think we should definitely respect this request and ensure that they have a united voice in advocating for their needs by keeping them in the same district. This would allow them to receive important services and investments and elect candidates of their choice. This is especially important, given the prevalence of anti-Asian hate over the past year, and underscores the importance of empowering the AAPI community in public policy. And as mapping tools show, the highest concentrations of AAPI voters and persons who speak Asian languages at home are found in South SAC, Florin, Vineyard, and West Elk Grove. So by splitting up this community, we would be diluting their power. So I would really strongly urge that you respect their requests and keep South SAC, Florin, Vineyard, and West Elk Grove in the same district. Additionally, they use the same school district, Elk Grove Unified School District. And Vineyard has much in common with neighboring Eastern Elk Grove, because they are both historically rural communities. Thank you for listening to my comment. I respectfully ask that AAPI communities be kept together by keeping Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South SAC together to the best extent possible. And this can be done through maps 101, 102, or 103. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, good evening supervisors. My name is Casey Thompson, and I'm a Sacramento County resident. And I'm calling in to support keeping the South County communities together, especially the AAPI community in the Florin, Elk Grove, Vineyard, and South Sacramento areas, as shown on maps 101, 102, or 103. You know, the Asian and Pacific Islander community has been requesting to be kept together in the South County, and I think we should respect their wishes. Keeping those communities together will ensure they have a united voice in advocating for their specific needs and receiving important services and investments, as well as electing the candidates of their choice. You know, given the recent prevalence of anti-Asian hate over the past year, this is just more important than ever. And so I would urge the Board to keep those communities together and not break them up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Veronica Beatty, and I'm a Sacramento County resident. I'm calling in tonight from the central city of Sacramento, which is its own vibrant community of interest, in solidarity with community members in the South County, particularly the Asian American Pacific Islander communities who are asking to be kept together with Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento as we redistrict. I've been working in South Sacramento communities for nearly a decade, and I know firsthand how often the needs of those communities are overlooked. I hope we can respect the requests of community leaders to create maps that allow our neighbors to have a united voice in advocating for their needs, informing public investments, and electing candidates of their choice. By doing so, we can create districts that reflect how lives in these neighboring areas actually work, where people support local businesses, share similar commutes, and send their kids to schools within the Elk Grove Unified School District. I respectfully ask that the communities of Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento be kept together as well as possible, like we see in maps 101, 102, or 103. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening supervisors. My name is Alex Torres. I'm a Sacramento County resident. I reside currently in Midtown, but lifelong Sacramento County resident who grew up in Elk Grove. I'll be brief. I want to align my comments with several of the previous speakers in support of the community members in the South County, in the AAPI community, asking for the communities to be kept together for Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South SAC. Growing up, many of the AAPI community friends, neighbors, folks we worship with, and it would be a shame to keep those communities apart and to tear them up. So strongly urge the continuity of that community, keeping the community together. Really appreciate the time, and respectfully ask you to, to the greatest extent possible with maps 101, 102, 103, keep those communities consistent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Walter Colomoto. I was the president of the Foreign Japanese American Citizens League, and I can attest to the longstanding area of, you know, the Asian American community in the Florin, Elk Grove, southern area, and I believe it should be kept whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Katsal, and I live in District 2. Yeah, I think we're holding a talk about this today. So we have, the district map is kind of a nightmare for a lot of people. Nobody in Sacramento really understands where and what district they live in and why they are mapped a certain way. So I can specifically say for District 2, like I live in Pocket, and it doesn't make sense for Pocket to be lumped up with Florin Road, the Florin area, because those are two, like, you know, economically, you know, resource-wise, like these are two very different areas. Pocket should probably be more with downtown and Land Park. Yeah, Folsom and Rancho Marietta and Gold River should probably be their own district. It does not make sense that they are with Elkhorn and Alberta and Antelope area up north. And then, yeah, we have all of Elk Grove, which is all urban, lumped in with Isleton. Yeah, we really need to mix these districts up so that they make sense, you know, socio-economically, so that, you know, people of different ranges are all together. Because otherwise, if you have, you know, low-income people all lumped into districts with like high-income people who are more likely to vote, because they're more likely to be represented in their district, yeah, they were not going to have a voice in the Board of Supervisors, and we're going to end up with, yeah, folks like, yeah, folks like we have in District 4 and District 1, just, yeah, not fully representing their constituents. Yeah, and District 3. Yeah, let's make sure that's with these districts up in such a way that people really get a voice in the Board of Supervisors, and maybe even add an additional district, just so that they don't end up with no geometric shade in order to do it.
You have 10 seconds, sir. Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank, excuse me, thank you, and good evening to everyone. My name is Barry Boyd. I am a long-term resident of District 8. I'm a board member with the Metta View Neighborhood Association. I am on the City of Sacramento, or I should say, I am a City of Sacramento Commissioner on the Planning and Design Commission, the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Commission, the Heritage Board, as well as a couple of others. I am disappointed with the redistricting timeframe. The process should be done with the state redistricting first, the county redistricting second, and the city redistricting last, so that would give everyone a clear view and understanding of what the redistricting lines would represent. Currently, since they are running concurrently, it is, or simultaneously, it is hard for anyone to figure out the county before the state is done, simply because of representation. But with that said, I would like to oppose map 203, and I do support map 202, or 202, excuse me, with an addition, or with the addition of Elk Grove in its entirety to supervisor Area 2. So again, I do approve of the current district map 202, but I would like to see the inclusion of Elk Grove into Area 2 as per your current map 202, if that adjustment could be considered. And of course, working out the population numbers would, well, I'll leave that up to you guys. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, I am supporting maps 201 and 202, and opposing map 203.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Thank you, ma'am. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay. Hello, hi, good evening supervisors. My name is Robert Longer. I'm a Sacramento County resident. I live in Natomas currently, but I lived in Elk Grove for 12 years. And I'm calling in tonight to talk to you about why I think it's very important to keep the Elk Grove geographic area that's adjacent to Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento intact. Not just from a quote-unquote "common sense" standpoint, because they're geographically linked together, but also because there's a lot of things that go together in that space. Commerce, travel, roads, public transit, schools, et cetera, that the community utilizes, that I certainly utilized as a resident of Elk Grove. And so also too, you know, what's important is that we can keep communities intact, and drawing lines that would redistrict or move folks out of a common, shared area really goes against the best interest of keeping communities intact, particularly in the South County. And so I'd urge you to please keep together these neighboring communities in the South County in accordance with the proposed maps 101, 102, and 103. And respectfully ask that you consider that. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you so much supervisors. My name is Dan. I'm a resident of Southland Park. And I just wanted to state that I think it's really important that we keep our communities of interest in the South Sacramento area together. Our community is strong, and we've got to continue to kind of build our coalitions with our diverse communities. We support map 101, 102, 103. And I appreciate any and all consideration of keeping our South area community together into a one-supervised district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening supervisors. My name is Dr. Flojean Kofar, and I'm a Sacramento County resident. And I am calling in support of our community members, especially those in the south of the county, in particular, our Asian American and Pacific Islander community, who are already asking for their communities to be kept united under one supervisor with Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento. In particular, I think this is important because these communities operate together, and they are specifically asking for this as a structural way of being able to advocate together and be able to keep some of the administrative aspects of managing their communities in one place. I also want to emphasize that, you know, as someone who is a student of history and understands how communities sometimes are separated to be able to separate their power, this is incredibly important. We want to be able to have communities talking together about issues that face them, and not having to go to several different people to be able to talk about this. So this is really important for the unification of that, as well as the fact that, you know, communities are often defined in ways that our political lines overstep and bifurcate. And so we want to make sure that we're not doing that as we are engaging in our redistricting. And so I strongly support this community asking to be kept together. I think this is important for all of us, even those of us who are not part of the AAPI community or may not live in this particular part of the county. And so I really appreciate your attention to this, and I respectfully ask that you keep the South Sacramento communities together by keeping Elk Grove, and Florin, and Vineyard, and South Sacramento together as best as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Megan Sapigal, and I am the co-director of the Sacramento API Regional Network. And I'm calling today representing a coalition of Asian Americans serving organizations. I'm also an Elk Grove resident, and I want to just make sure that I amplify, on behalf of our community, the Asian and Pacific Islander community, that we worked really hard in 2019 and 2020 during the census to count our community and our hardest account. And this includes our non-monolithic community. We have a lot of other, a lot of sub-API community members that we worked really hard to make sure we're included in this count. This also includes our intersectional community, our undocumented community, our monolingual community. Now, according to the preliminary numbers, we are seeing that there is an exponential growth in Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in Elk Grove, South Sacramento, Vineyard, Florin. And I am asking the Board today to please keep those communities together, especially Elk Grove City, Vineyard, up to Florin Road, because we have so much in common as a community, and because of the hard work that folks, that we put in to making sure that our communities were counted accurately. Separating us would severely stifle our power, our numbers, our representation. And so we are asking that you consider public maps 101, 102, and 103. Again, on behalf of the Asian American community... 101, 102, and 103. Again, on behalf of the Asian-American community, we hope that you will consider for the greater good and for all of our communities to not disrupt the work that we worked so hard, to honor the census numbers, and to please keep the Elk Grove community with neighboring communities in South Sacramento, Florin, and Vineyard together in this redistricting effort. Thank you so much.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is PJ. I'm a Sacramento County resident of over 40 years. I've lived from Rancho Cordero to Midtown to the Arden area and South Sacramento. I stand in support of community members in the southern portion of the county, especially the Asian-American, Pacific Islander community, who are asking their communities be kept together. The Asian-American, Pacific Islanders community requests to be kept together in the South County should be respected. Keeping these communities together would ensure that they have a united voice in advocating for their needs, receiving services and investments, and electing candidates of their choice. The county's mapping tool shows that the highest concentration of Asian voters and folks who speak Asian languages at home are found in South Sacramento, Florin, Vineyard, and West Elk Grove. When Asian and Pacific Islander voters have elected candidates in this area, they've often elected candidates from their very own communities. Splitting up the community would dilute its power. This is especially important, given the prevalence of anti-Asian hate over the past year driven by our former president, all of which underscores the importance of empowering the Asian Pacific Islander community in public policy. Thank you for listening to my public comment. I respectfully ask that our communities be kept together, including by keeping Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento together to the best extent possible, as shown in maps 101, 102, or 103. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Paco Torres. I am a resident of District One and a constituent of Supervisor Phil Serna. As a member of the API community, I want to advocate for keeping Elk Grove, South Sacramento, and Vineyard together so that the API vote is not diluted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Oh, good evening, Supervisors. My name is Orlando Fuentes. I'm a 41-year, 42-year resident of Sacramento County and a 30-year resident of Elk Grove and supervisory district five. I'm calling to ask that my community be kept together in one supervisory district with neighboring communities in the South County area. In particular, please keep Elk Grove together with Florin Vineyard and South Sacramento. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the 2010 census indicated that Elk Grove had a 29% API community, and with the 2020 census, it's now 33, and I believe the plurality in the city of Elk Grove. So that large concentration of Asian population in Elk Grove is culturally and politically and economically connected to these areas of South Sacramento County. So I encourage you to keep these communities of interest together. Thank you so much for your time. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Next caller.
Thank you.
Sorry. Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, hi. My name is Tracy Stafford, and I am a resident of Elk Grove. My young family and I moved here 21 years ago, you know, to raise our children. And one of the reasons that we moved here was because of adversity in the area. And when we're looking at the maps that are being proposed, we are extremely, you know, concerned because these communities of, of course, South Sac, Florin Vineyard, Elk Grove work together, almost as a unit. And the API community, of course, has an extreme, extremely powerful voice, as do the African-American, Latinx. It's where we chose, again, to raise our family. And to dilute these communities by separating them has a major impact, as we know. But we need to talk about what that means in terms of health and social services, criminal justice, homelessness, affordable housing. You know, these are all major challenges that we face in this community. And to dilute the voices of these people that have very different needs from others, I think is, as I think we all believe, who are calling here tonight, is extremely problematic. So I'd like to ask that you do everything within your power to keep these communities together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Evan Minten. I'm a worker in the nonprofit sector and a longtime Sacramento County resident. I stand in strong support of my friends and community members in the Asian Pacific Islander community who are asking that their communities be kept together with Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento. This is best reflected in maps 101, 102, and 103. Keeping their communities together would ensure that they have a united voice in advocating for their needs, receive important services and investments, and can elect candidates of their choice. I think that we can all agree that this is not a time to abandon our AAPI friends and neighbors. AAPI community members have long been excluded and had to struggle for belonging, safety, and equity in the United States and here locally. But this struggle has reached a new level. During the COVID-19 pandemic, political rhetoric arose, scapegoating Asian-American people across the United States and right here in our backyards. Widespread reports of hate incidents and violence occurred as a result of this rhetoric. This has happened to people that I respect and Sacramentoans that I know that many of you respect as well. These AAPI community members have told me that the discrimination, targeting, and scapegoating they experience has deepened theirs and their family members' trauma. And frankly, this harkens back to more than a century of anti-Asian sentiment and discrimination in the United States. In honor and in light of the Asian-American Pacific Islanders' historic struggles, current struggles, and their strength and resilience, I stand in support of the AAPI community members' request to be kept together and to be kept whole, and I hope that you honor them tonight as well. Their ask is simple: to be, to have Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento kept together to the best extent possible. And those are shown in maps 101, 102, and 103. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
My name is Jay King. I oppose map 203, and I support map 201 and 202. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening, Supervisors. My name is LeLo, and I am a resident of Sacramento County and a co-executive director for the Sacramento API Regional Network that serves residents across Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento. And I'm calling to ask that my community be kept together in one supervisory district with neighboring communities in the South County area. In particular, please keep Elk Grove together with Florin Vineyard and South Sacramento. The county's own mapping tool shows that the highest concentration of AAPI voters and persons who speak Asian languages at home are found in South Sacramento, Florin Vineyard, and Elk Grove. And the Asian-American Pacific Islanders' community request is to be kept together in the South County, and I hope that that can be respected. Keeping AAPI community members together would ensure that they have a united voice in advocating for their needs, receiving important services and investments, and electing candidates of their choice. This is especially even more important, given the prevalence of anti-Asian hate over the past year, which underscores the importance of empowering the Asian-American Pacific Islander community in public policy. And when AAPI voters have elected candidates in their area, they've often elected candidates from their own community. The decision to split up the AAPI community despite the community's feedback is an attempt to dilute their power and to continue to elect candidates that, in order to dilute their power so that they cannot represent, elect candidates that represent their shared interests. And these areas share resources, many of them attend Elk Grove Unified School District, which means that their kids go to the same school, play together on the same teams, and use the same parks and recreational activity facilities. And regardless of their race, ethnicity, income level, gender, or sexuality, these residents travel interchangeably to shop, dine, and build communities and experience life together. Thank you for listening to my public comment. I respectfully ask that my community be kept together with those neighboring communities in the South County, as shown on map 101, 102, or 103. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Andres Ramos. I'm a Sacramento County resident. I grew up in Elk Grove. I'm a member of the queer community, the Latino community, and I want to stand in support, solidarity, of the Asian-American Pacific Islander community in asking that the board keep, to the best extent possible, Elk Grove, Florin Vineyard, and South Sacramento together to ensure that their voice as a community can be preserved. We know that Elk Grove is geographically adjacent to Florin Vineyard and South Sac. A lot of common interests, for example, same public transit routes. Folks go to CRC for Community College, served by the same light rail line in the South County. All these communities are in the Elk Grove School District. I'm a graduate of the Elk Grove School District. We went to the same schools, use the same recreation facilities, a lot in common. We're also very diverse communities that have very similar demographics, not only with the AAPI community, but also with the Latino community, with queer folks, with African-American folks, things of that nature. A lot of common immigrant, first-generation commonality in our communities, certainly in my family history, and as well with many of the new folks residing in South Sac Elk Grove. So I think the maps that best do that in the South County are 101, 102, and 103. So I would encourage the board to look at those maps and how they do the South County with District Five, and try to preserve that in the next iteration of the maps when you give direction to the demographer. Please listen to the voice of the AAPI community. Listen to our voices with those who've lived in the South County. Keep these communities together. Thank you for the time. And again, maps 101, 102, 103, use that as your guidepost on how to put the South County District Five together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is JD Garcia, and I'm a resident of Sacramento County. I'm calling to stand in support of community members in the South County, especially the Asian-American Pacific Islander community, who are asking that their communities be kept together with Elk Grove, Florin Vineyard, and South Sacramento. Elk Grove is geographically adjacent to Florin Vineyard and South Sacramento. These communities, they share similar commercial centers, travel on the same roads, their kids go to school together, and they enjoy similar regional amenities. These communities have more in common with each other than they do with other distant communities in other parts of the county. Thank you for listening to my public comment. I respectfully ask that our communities be kept together, including keeping Elk Grove, Florin Vineyard, and South Sacramento together to the best extent possible, as shown in maps 101, 102, or 103. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. I'm just going to let everyone know, we're still hovering at around 15 callers. They're just kind of staying at that line there. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Supervisors. My name's Vanessa, and I'm a resident of Elk Grove. I live in Laguna West. And I'm calling to ask that my community be kept together in one supervisory district with my neighboring communities in the South County area. In particular, please keep Elk Grove together with South Sac Vineyard and Florin. It's really important to me personally because I'm geographically very close to South Sac. I routinely walk over to South Sac for shopping, for worship, for traveling on the same routes and roads that have the light rail, because I did attend Kissimmee River College, and that is the last stop for the light rail that's closest to me. And so that part of the community should be kept together as one. We have more in common with each other than we do with more distant communities in other parts of the county. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen to my public comment, and I respectfully ask that my community be kept together with these neighboring hood communities in the South County, as shown on maps 101, 102, and 103. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Max Vargas. I'm a resident of Elk Grove. And I'm calling to ask that my neighbors and my community be kept together in one supervisory district, referring to the Elk Grove, Florin Vineyard, and South Sacramento area. As an Elk Grove resident, I know that these areas aren't just adjacent to us, Florin Vineyard and South Sac. It's also, you know, vital community of interest that shares in commercial districts, that shares in transit routes, and that shares in school districts and other services that tie our community together. We do have more in common with each other than we do with some other further distant communities in other parts of the county. So I'd humbly request that you consider and preserve our neighborhood and our neighbors and our adjacent communities here together. I appreciate you listening to these comments, and ask that the community be kept together, and that you consider maps 101, 102, or 103. That would help do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening, Supervisors. My name is Christina Torres, and I live in the Sacramento County. I grew up in South Sacramento my entire life. I'm calling today to ask that you keep the community together in this district that we are discussing tonight, specifically the Elk Grove, Florin Vineyard, and South Sac counties. We are in favor of the AAPI staying together and respectfully understanding their wishes of being held together. We do not want them to be split up. So I thank you for listening to my public comments on this, and I respectfully ask that the communities be kept together, as shown on the map, in 101, 102, and 103. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, do I state my name now?
Oh, yes, sir. You can if you'd like to state your name, and then you'll have two minutes to make your comments.
Okay. My name is Dwight Armstrong. I'm a resident of Sacramento, California. I was born here. This concerns redistricting. I would like to announce that I support 201 and 202, and I I would like to announce that I support 201 and 202, and I strongly oppose 203. That's my comment. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir.
And next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Rosanna Herbert, and I'm a resident of Sacramento County. I'm calling tonight to ask that the County Board of Supervisors keep together several neighboring communities in the South County area that are clearly a community of interest. Specifically, I'm talking about keeping Elk Grove together with Florin, Vineyard, and the South Sacramento neighborhood. These communities belong together. There's a large concentration of Asian American Pacific Islanders in this area, and it's important that their power not be diluted. So to recap, please keep Elk Grove together with Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento, and you can do this by supporting either map 101, 102, or 103. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your public comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, hi. My name is Keon Bliss, and I'm a constituent of District 1. And I'm calling to echo a lot of what previous callers before me have said in demanding that this board recognize the community of interest of the Asian American Pacific Islanders community in Florin, Vineyard, and Elk Grove, and South Sacramento and whatnot, and really calling for you to keep as many communities, or keeping these communities together as much as possible. And really, listen to what your constituents are telling you. This is, like, this seems like a no-brainer. I'm hoping that you all will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hello? This is Cynthia Shalit. Should I start tracking now?
Oh yes, please. Start now, and you have about two minutes.
Okay. I just want the Board of Supervisors to really keep Elk Grove together, because that's with the neighboring communities of South Sacramento, Florin, and Vineyard, because really, this is all of South Sac. I mean, to combine them up in Rancho Cordova is just crazy, because that's really considered North Sac. So there's just a real community identity with those communities of South Sac, Florin, and Vineyard. So please, as you draw the map, keep those together. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, hi. My name is Kula Konig, and I'm a resident of District 3. I'm really just calling tonight to echo many of the sentiments of those I work with in community, heard mischoveng earlier on, just that we need to listen to our friends from the AAPI community in terms of, you know, what works best for their communities, keeping folks together, not diluting power, and, you know, just, it's been a long night, but I just really want to echo those sentiments that were heard earlier about keeping the AAPI community together. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good evening supervisors. Eric Sunderland here, lifelong Sacramento resident, and I'm calling tonight in strong support of maps 101, 102, and 103. Keep our South Sacramento AAPI siblings together, communities together, strong communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening supervisors. My name is Karen Bernal. I've been a resident of Sacramento County for 25 years. I am a member of the API community, and I just want to voice my support for those that have called in, particularly those from the community, in support of maps 101, 102, and 103, for keeping together Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sac. I mean, if you look at how life goes on there, typically, there is a great deal of commuting, doing business, living, going to schools. With the two communities, with all of those communities adjacent to one another, it is a natural community. And so it would be unnatural to break it up. And I think, given the high prevalence also of what we've seen lately in our country with anti-Asian hate, we can't, you know, emphasize enough how important it is to have representation and our voice represented here. So please do not break up the communities of Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sac. Please support maps 101, 102, and 103. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And send the next caller, please. We're getting close. All right. Please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello?
Yes. Start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Murad Sorama. I'm a Sacramento County resident. I live in the unincorporated area of the county called Roseville Station and Antelope Neighborhood. I stand in support of community members in the South County, especially the Asian American Pacific Islander community, who are asking that their communities be kept together with Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento. Elk Grove is geographically adjacent to Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento. They shop and buy groceries in similar commercial centers, travel on the same roads, take the same public transit routes. Their kids go to the same schools, and they enjoy similar regional amenities. Those communities have more in common with each other than they do with more distant communities in other part of the county. The Asian American Pacific Islander community's request to be kept together in the South County should be respected. Keeping AAPI communities together would ensure that they have a united voice in advocating for their needs, receiving important services and investments, and electing candidates of their choice. This is especially important, given the anti-Asian hate over the past year, which underscores the importance of empowering the AAPI community in public policy. The county's own mapping tool shows that the highest concentration of AAPI voters and persons who speak Asian languages at home are found in South Sacramento, Florin, Vineyard, and West Elk Grove. When AAPI voters have elected candidates in this area, they have often elected candidates from their community, such as Darren Suen, Stephanie Nguyen, Bobby Singh Allen, Sean Yang, Mai Vang, and Harold Beck. Thank you for listening to my public comment. I respectfully ask that our communities be kept together, including Elk Grove. And I want to show, I want to actually extend maps 101 and 102 to be respected, and also maps 101, 102 to be voted for in your body. Thank you. Sorry, I went too long.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Michael Seaman. I've been a resident of Arden Arcade since 1978. My comments pertain to map NDC 204. As for District 3, please focus on the unincorporated communities north of the American River. Get rid of the parts of the city of Sacramento, East Sac, Campus Commons, and La Rivaire, as they unduly influence the results. And add the unincorporated Old Foothill Farms area that's shown on your map southeast of Citrus Heights and north of Carmichael. Those two areas are part of the same CPAC. If necessary, add North Highlands and McClellan Park, as we have a community of interest with that area. For District 1, I would suggest adding Rio Linda and Alberta, as they are semi-rural bluting-edge growth areas, just like those north of the airport on the other side of I-5. And move the southeast parts of District 1 into District 2. I'll cover that in more in a moment. District 2 should focus on the city of Sacramento and basically push it north. Get rid of Vineyard and add the southeast parts of District 1, and lose the unincorporated Finger. Add a small part of Freeport south and west of I-5 if necessary. District 4 should add the rest of the city of Rancho Cordova. Don't split the city of Rancho Cordova. Essentially, District 4 becomes a municipal district that serves three cities, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, and Folsom. Also, add Gold River, because they have a common community of interest association with those cities. And then finally, for District 5, add the Vineyard area and the unincorporated Finger of District 2. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good evening supervisors. My name is Corinne McIntosh Sacco. I was born and raised in South Sacramento, and I'm a current resident of Supervisor Kennedy's District 2. My husband and son are members of the AAPI community, as are my in-laws, who live in Elk Grove. As such, I'm calling tonight to ask that my community be kept together in one supervisor district with neighboring communities in the South County area. In particular, please keep Elk Grove together with Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento. The Asian American Pacific Islander community's request to be kept together in the South County should be respected. Keeping AAPI communities together would ensure that they have a united voice in advocating for their needs, receiving important services and investments, and electing candidates of their choice. This is especially important, given the prevalence of anti-Asian hate over the past year, which really underscores the importance of empowering the AAPI community in public policy. The county's own mapping tool shows that the highest concentrations of AAPI voters and persons who speak Asian languages at home are found in South Sacramento, Florin, Vineyard, and West Elk Grove. When AAPI voters have elected candidates in this area, they've often elected candidates from their community, such as Stephanie Nguyen, Bobby Singh Allen, and Mai Vang. Splitting up the AAPI community would dilute its power to continue to elect candidates of their choice. I know it's been a long day for you all. Thank you for listening to my public comment. I respectfully ask that my community be kept together with these neighboring communities in the South County, as shown on maps 101, 102, and 103. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And send the next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, I'm a decorated veteran, and I vote no on 203 and yes on 201 and 202.
Thank you, sir. And send the next caller, please. Hello, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. Hi caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let's start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Nancy Fox. I'm a resident of Elk Grove, and one of Don Montolive's constituents. And I'm calling to recommend that the board keep Elk Grove together with South Sacramento, Vineyard, because we have communities of interest, we share the same interests and attitudes, and would like to see it not break us up. That is my recommendation, and I hope you follow that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. And please transfer the last caller, and we'll leave the queue open, but we'll take the last caller right now. Thank you. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening supervisors. My name is Chris Ytulak. I live in Folsom in East County, but I'm calling in support of community efforts in South County to keep the people of Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento together. I believe a pretty compelling reason to keep them together is the fact that these areas share common education resources. First, they're all in the Elk Grove Unified School District, which means that the kids there go to the same schools, play together on the same team, and use the same parks and rec facilities. These areas are also served by Consumus River College in South Sacramento, which has a satellite center in Elk Grove and serves the southernmost RT light rail station that serves all of these South County communities. I respectfully ask that the communities of Elk Grove, Florin, Vineyard, and South Sacramento be kept together to the best extent possible, as shown in maps 101, 102, or 103. Thank you again for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, as of right now, there is no one else in the queue. Okay. At this time, Natasha, I think you had begun your presentation, or was Doug up next? Okay, Mr. Doug Slokum.
Ma'am Chair, does, are, the person doing the signing, does she need a break at all, or is she okay?
There, there are a couple of signers shifting. You can't see it, but I can barely see it as they're shifting. They're taking turns.
Madam Chair, Doug Yolcom, good to see you again. What I would like to do very quickly is go through a little presentation, am I on? That we have made, that we have put together, and summarizing some of the comments that we had received online. Not counting what we received this evening, but one thing we want to make very clear is that we have been watching the comments as they come in to the website. We're taking note of them and recording them, and to the best of our, to the extent that we can, implementing those that we, in the maps that we produced. There was one public submitted map that was submitted since the last time. There was another one submitted today, so we'll be covering that tomorrow if we can get it processed in time. But anyway, the public, as we now know, has been involved, and is getting involved. And then we'll look at the draft map that I put together, which is numbered 204 in your packet. And I'm sure we'll hear from the public again. This is our standard slide. Don't forget, we have to go by certain rules. Here's a summary of some of the online comments that we've got, and I think it's very clear from the first group, Rancho Marietta wants to be in District 4. I don't think there's any question about that. We received over 200 comments, and perhaps more, since I put this slide together. Notably, there was the letter received from a coalition of Asian American Pacific Islander groups that came into the website. They asked for They asked for recognition of the community of interest in South Sacramento and Elk Grove, which we have just heard. There was a comment that Gold River is a good addition to a Fair Oaks district, and there was a comment that the Gold River belongs with Citrus Heights and Folsom. The Sacramento States, there were some Sacramento State students who submitted some various neighborhood maps, just outlining communities that they thought were neighborhoods. And there was a comment about, several comments about keeping Rio Linda and Elverta together as a community. Again, I mentioned we had one public map submission, which I will show you in a second, and we have a new draft map tonight. And then we will hear from the board and the public as to what we shall do next. Here's the map received from the public anonymously. I can't tell you who submitted this, but it is, I wanted to point out, an interesting district. It goes from downtown Fair, for District 3 especially. It goes from old Fair Oaks to old Sacramento. By doing that, obviously, District 1 has to move north into the Antelope area. District 2 is pushed south and west, east into the Rosemont area. District 5 is strictly South County, most of Vineyard, Elk Grove, Wilton. And District 4 starts in Citrus Heights, includes Rancho Marietta and all of Rancho Cordova and Mather in this submitted map. Here is the map that I put together, based on the comments we received from the last meeting. I'll describe it briefly. District 1 is pretty much in the same area, except I tried to do the, I tried to take care of the Land Park-Curtis Park problem, and from what I've heard, I don't think I did. Because in this map, Curtis Park is in District 1, and Land Park is united in District 2. But the south boundary of District 2 does not change. And because of the adjustment with the parks, I had to make an adjustment on power in the power and road area for equal balance. District 3 in this example is, I think, the same as the last, one of my other draft maps. It simply adds Gold River to make up for its population shortage. District 4, which has a much larger population shortage, in this iteration goes, keeps Rancho Marietta as desired by that community, and takes the southeast portion of Rancho Cordova, basically Anatolia area, the Aerojet area. And the line is, it goes from 50 to White Rock to Zinfandel, and then down Eagles Nest to Highway 16, which is the Jackson Highway. That's the Rancho Cordova border in this district, in this draft map. Before I go to the next steps, as Natasha mentioned, I did attend the Rancho Cordova City Council meeting last night, and I went to, I told them I would reflect to you what they said to us. And I'm going to take out my notes, so I reflect it properly. By a vote of 3 to 2, the council changed its advice to the board from its last letter, where it said it wanted to be united in one district, and they now say by a vote of 3 to 2 that they want to be split in the following way. This was Mr. Councilman Sander, who made the motion, and he suggested that Foothill Farms be added to District 3. He was basing it on the last draft we had, which was number 203. He suggested that Foothill Farms be added to District 3, and that portion of Rancho Cordova east of Sunrise, which is, if you look at 204, it's the part that's in purple, basically, goes to District 5 instead of District 4. He also suggested that adding La Riviera and adding the portion of La Riviera that's in the Folsom-Cordova School District to District 3, and also the Mather area should be added to District 3. He then suggested the Gold River should be added to District 3 or District 5. I kind of did a little iteration of that. I can show it to you if you'd like. It doesn't add up very well. District 3 in that configuration has about 30,000 too many people. So it's not a, it's not a district that, as Mr. Sander described it, it's not a district that we can implement. But again, I don't know if that's what he, if that's precisely what he meant, but that's based on my notes from what his motion in front of the council was. So that motion passed 3 to 2. And I told them that I would reflect that to you all. And they said they were going to send a letter. I have not seen the letter.
We received it this afternoon. It's consistent, Doug, we received it. It's consistent with what you described. Came in this afternoon, the letter. Somebody get a copy to Doug, the letter.
Tell me where to go from here. I've got a draft map 204 that you can look at.
These are pretty wide open.
I believe, I was reflecting your comments from the last meeting. I admit that I've tried to cut the baby in Land Park a couple times, and I failed both times. So tell me what to do.
So before we begin, I just wanted to mention to the board, I mentioned to a couple people that I was thinking we could, I think several, at least two or three of us have an idea on a direction or a map. I thought maybe each of us could make some opening comments, and then we could deliberate after we each have a chance for those opening comments. Did you have something important that you wanted to say, Supervisor Natasha?
I'm fine with that process, but I think Doug asked kind of opening question a moment ago, not about where we should tell them to go, but about putting things up on the board. So as a part of that, if we have the ability, whether we have it in hand or you have a tool that we can...
Let me tell you what I can do. I have a blank, I have a draft map 203 or 204 in its original form, and we can go from there. Or I have a completely blank map. You can start from scratch.
Yeah.
So whatever you would like to do, I think I can accommodate.
No, thanks, but I just, to the chair's question, so I think allow us to make some opening comments, reflecting on what we heard this evening, certainly the other comments, and then, you know, asking, again, whatever map you're working off of to, you know, plug in, and to, you know, again, taking into account anything we heard, anything that comes to mind, considerations, and then allow you, I assume you can put up population numbers if you make...
Yeah. What our, what this will show you is, as we draw, it will show you how many people are being added. It'll draw a line. I can pull out and show you the whole district. I can go in very closely and show you street by street how you do it, whatever you prefer.
Okay, and you could show the difference it makes in each of the districts, so if there's a change, you'll reflect the change, not just in the district that's being suggested, but in any of the adjoining districts.
Yes, it does that simultaneously.
That's fine, yeah. I think what you said, Madam Chair, and allow us to proceed and...
Okay, and I, you know, I know it looks like we might have some callers still dribbling in, but I think right now I would like for us to deliberate, and then we can take the last public comments at the end and then finalize the meeting tonight. So this first person in the queue is Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, and I've asked the chairs, the chair to consider my suggestion that for the purposes of what I'd like to share tonight, I'd like to make some opening comments from the dais, but then I'm going to go down and use the overhead, because I think it's probably the easiest way for me to try and explain some suggested changes, so that both my colleagues, staff, and the public can understand graphically what I'm suggesting. So first and foremost, I want to sincerely thank members of the public that called in tonight. Obviously, as Doug mentioned, I think we have growing engagement on the subject of redistricting, which is encouraging. And regardless of which map numbers people suggested they prefer, it's very good to hear from folks about what's of interest to them, and it certainly gives this board, gives me food for thought. And I just want to say that first and foremost. I think it goes without saying, this exercise that we're deep into at this point, it is like a puzzle, and it's not a simple one, because it just, as I think we all have acknowledged in the past, movement in one area has, you know, precipitous effect in others. And so it's not just as easy as throwing up one district map and suggesting that that's the right way to go. So, but what I'd like to do at this point, Madam Chair, is pass out to my right here three sets of diagrams, and I don't know if you have, there you go. And then I have the same sets for Natasha, Doug, and Ann, and any other staff member that wants one, and then I'm going to make my way down to the podium. All right, so first, let me say that what I've done, and what I'm going to prepare here in a moment, is working from the last iteration that Doug provided us, which is map 204, which I believe is the product of some of the input that we gave last time. And I thought it would be best to work in kind of an iterative process, so that, to avoid confusion and not to go back and forth between the first, between the existing conditions and a map that is reflective of so many changes in the intervening time. So what I'm going to do is walk through, there's two exhibits here. One is an exhibit that shows various communities within the existing District 1 and adjacent to District 1. And you'll note that the, you note that the title above reflects that this is per Doug's map 204. And I did, by the way, make use of the mapping tool that permits us all to go over with the cursor and shade various, I don't know if there are census block groups or what the increment is, but it's very useful for determining what population counts are in which specific areas and neighborhoods. So what this says is, or what it communicates, based on Doug's map 204, is that, you know, as he referred to it as the Land Park problem, I don't know, I guess I don't know why it was ever a problem to begin with. Because as has been noted liberally, both Districts 1 and 2, unlike some of the other districts, actually start from a place of being well within the margin to be acceptable, based on all the criteria that we are expected to consider for reapportionment. So what this shows, and I apologize for not having the red line on your maps, but I had to hand draw this, and it was quite a bit of time and work for me to do that on 20 copies here. But simply, the red line is the current outline of District 1. So you can see that what I'm calling Upper Land Park, the area between Willa Way and Broadway, east to 21st, as well as what I'm calling City College North, East Franklin Corridor, east of McCollum Business Park, Rio Linda, and, I'm sorry, west of McCollum Park, Rio Linda, and east of McCollum Park, North Highlands, is in there. And these blue shaded areas represent the areas that Doug changed pursuant to map 204. So the population counts that come with that, you can see in the tabulation that the loss here per map 204 amounts to 9,645 residents. The gain is 4,636, and that, again, is pursuant to a suggestion Doug has made for District 1 to go even further south into about, I guess roughly a square mile south of Florin, down to Gerber, Gerber Road and the unincorporated county. Now, what I've attempted to do here is, in the notes section, give you some idea of how I perceived some of the problematic elements with what Doug has suggested. So this is not just an arbitrary difference of opinion necessarily. It's the fact that I believe that these unnecessary changes, and I would characterize them exactly that way, they're not necessary to balance District 1 or balance District 2. But you can see that, again, Upper Land Park, we worked very, very hard, I worked very hard with the LGBTQ community in 2011, following the last federal census, to really try for the first time in this county, respect and acknowledge kind of the consolidated, or a consolidated LGBTQ community in Upper Land Park, downtown, midtown, Curtis Park. Doesn't mean that there aren't other areas, obviously, in Sacramento County where, depending on how you, you know, what metrics you look at, there, you know, a similar argument could be made. But as I noted last time, one of the public exhibits that was submitted by Mr. Alan Lefazo does give us a heat map of sorts that bears this out. So, and I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, was using as a surrogate affiliation or formal registration with various LGBTQ advocacy groups. So that was kind of the rationale for questioning why Upper Land Park should come out of District 1 and go into District 2. Of course, I also believe that regardless of which district we're talking about, I think the area that's east of 21st and north of City College belongs with that portion of Upper Land Park. You might even consider it an extension of Upper Land Park. Then, I guess one of the most puzzling parts of what Doug submitted, and I don't know if it was because he forgot or not, but I don't understand why, especially based on a couple of his earlier maps, the areas at the northern, around the northern tip of McCollum Park weren't being considered to either go into, on the west side into District 4, which needs the most or needs considerable population, or to District, in District 3, North Highlands on the east side. So I don't know if that's something, Doug, that you missed, but when you put that in play, and then you look, I'm going to now switch to the exhibit that I've come up here, come up with here in terms of the new numbers, or the new world numbers, if you will, is putting those numbers back into District 1. You can see now what used to be a loss, or used to be acknowledged as a loss, is now a gain, but I've also added losing the areas on the east and west side of northern McCollum Park, because I believe that's what Doug himself had suggested be considered in earlier iterations. Now, what I would draw your attention to with this comparison is that the... is that the differentials or the deviation over/under numbers actually improve with what I've suggested here. So not only, given the rationale, the reasoning that I purport exists to keep those areas in the south part of the district in District One, it also gets us to a better place numerically, at least between Districts One, Districts Two, and District Four. And I should have said from the outset, it should be somewhat obvious, but I'll say it anyways, the universe of consideration in these exhibits does not include District Three at the moment, or District Five, because it really doesn't have any bearing here. So what I would like to suggest is that, in terms of how we move forward, is certainly consider keeping District One whole as it is with its current southerly boundaries. And what I do think is, and should be in play, is what Doug has already acknowledged himself, the areas around McCollum Park going into District Four and/or District Three. I would also suggest, I haven't done the math, but we did have one caller that, tonight, that reminded us that perhaps looking at bringing the small city portions of District Three, including Sac State, Campus Commons, La Riviera, College Glen, College Greens, that there's, I think there is a possibility that that could be at play as well, in order to bring that into District One, with the rationale being keeping the city of Sacramento to two districts, and keeping that particular community of interest whole as well. So at this point, I'll be quiet and ask my colleagues if they have any questions about what I've analyzed and suggested here. And I do the same for Doug as well.
Phil, I guess, just real simple question is, what you're recommending is basically status quo for District One and Two, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's another way to say it.
Another way to say it. But I just don't want to say it that way without some rationale and some, yeah. But that, but I said it that way last time, I think, so.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Desmond?
Yeah. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I, too, was thinking about the issue with North Highlands. I mean, that's certainly a census designated place up there, both of the east and west of McCollum Park. And I think it would make sense to consider breaking off the eastern side of it to District Three, the western side to District Four. And I also have thought about the city of Sacramento, that dynamic down there. I mean, I think it would, they'd be probably much better suited if the city, the entire city of Sacramento was served by both District Two and District One. So I agree with that. I know, I don't know how that might work, what the ripple effect might be for that, Doug, with the numbers down there, but we'd have to plug that in and see. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Before we get to our chair, I'd also like to point out, before I forget, that at the outset of the public comment period, we did hear a number of public commentators make it clear, at least from what I heard, that they had a preference for maps 202 and 201, and not 203. And I believe 201 and 202 were the two maps that Doug had suggested that keep the southerly boundaries most intact. So. Sue?
Were, had you completed your comment? I don't have any problems with what you have presented regarding your district, and I like the idea of including Rio Linda intact in District Four. And
Don, did you have any questions?
Did you have any quick questions or comments, Don?
No, thank you, Phil, for certainly the effort you put into this. And people often kid about making sausage, but this is what it's going to look like tonight, I'm sure, before we're all done. But I think hearing the comments, and certainly what you've inserted into the consideration here is another good piece of information. But I think it, you know, as Patrick stated, you know, you're assuming a status quo for Districts One and Two, which then puts District Three, Four, and Five into much greater play, potentially. So I guess as we hear, come across the dais here tonight, but thanks, I think this gives us, you know, another good launch point, so.
Great. Thank you. And then finally, Doug, did you have any questions or comments? Do you want to hire me now?
No. Mr. Kennedy, let's do it. What do you think? That's what I would ask. On those particular items. I'll leave out the McCollum piece for now, because that's a, that's a different consideration.
Okay. Okay, so Supervisor Kennedy is up next.
Okay. I don't have a tremendous amount of heartburn over this. I was just responding to constituents, Phil, as far as the north part of Lampard. I guess my one question of you, Doug, though, is, and I realize that, you know, a limited number of callers does not a county make. But we did hear a significant number of callers talking about one issue, and that was keeping a small section of South Sacramento, Florin, Vineyard, and Elk Grove all in one community. Do you have any, any thoughts on that? Because I mean, I'm looking at 204 has District Two as a 30% API, and Five as a 25%. So I mean, pretty significant.
Yeah. My comment, I'll make a general comment. The Asian community has been growing, and if you look at the mapping tool that we provided called District R, and just turn on the Asian Pacific background, you can do it in one click. And you'll see that they are, it's dispersed all over the county. Elk Grove has a significant portion, as these folks mentioned, so does South SAC, Vineyard, and Florin. So yes, there is an Asian community of interest that they are asserting. So we can do a district there, but that, and Mr. Ramos did indeed put in two of his maps that particular district. So we could, we could do that, but it would, it would change everything, including what Mr. Serna just spoke about. Your district, as I mentioned, perhaps would move south, south and east. His district would move north. So
Oh, you mean his southern, he can't move north.
Right. Well, it could move into the Rio Linda area. I don't know.
Oh, I see.
I, I think we can certainly look at, what was it, 101, 102, 103 with Mr. Ramos's maps? We could look at those, and you can see some of the effects. And if you, if you would like us to go in that direction, then perhaps we should go in that direction. I have no
I'm not prepared to say that's the map, you know? I mean, but I do think that there was significant enough comments on that one subject that I think we owe it to take a look at them.
Absolutely.
In a little deeper way than we have in the past, where, you know, you verbally went over them, but maybe take a little deeper dive, just, just because of the questions that were posed tonight, and the issues. And at this point, that's all I have.
Okay. And just to your, just to your comment about the 101, two, and three maps essentially take my district and make it something completely different. I'm not even living in some of those. So it'll be difficult. I'm not even sure how that would work, so.
Madam Chair, I'm not advocating for a map at this time. Don't get me wrong.
Thank you. I was panicking.
No, no, I'm not advocating for a map at this time. However, I do think that I would like to take a deep, for example, that issue, I'd like to take a deeper dive and just see what the ramifications are of consolidating those communities would be, would look like.
Yeah, I'm looking at 101, 102, and 103 right now. And they don't conform to what some of the folks were saying. In other words, Elk Grove is not combined with south part of the county, the south part of the city, or Florin. Elk Grove is separate in each one.
103 is the one that doesn't comport with what they were saying, because it cuts Vineyard out. And so Vineyard and Florin are barely together. So 101 and 102 would be more in line with what the callers were calling about. Correct?
If they're including Elk Grove in their consideration, then the answer would be no. Because Elk Grove is always in Five in each of those.
I know, but 101 and 102 add Vineyard and Florin area.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. I keep looking at the south part of the city, and that's not included. You're correct. In District, in 101, Elk Grove is combined with Vineyard and Florin. 102, the same.
Right. But 103, Vineyard's not. It doesn't do what the callers were
Is different.
Many of the callers who called in to say they liked 101, 102, or 103 advocated for keeping those communities together, but 103 doesn't even do that.
That's correct. And my apologies for focusing on the south part of the city, which is what some of the callers were talking about. 101 and 102 does combine those three non-city areas into one district. And to look at their numbers
Well, I think part of the problem is, is that we all have, not all of us, but many, many people have different definitions of what South Sacramento is. I mean, even Phil and I, who grew up there, you know? So I think that's part of the problem, is what people in their own minds define as South Sacramento. There are those who believe anything south of 50 is South Sacramento.
And 101 and 102, District Five is the same, and it comes out with 31%
No.
Asian Pacific Islander population.
Oh, statistically, it's the same. Yes, yes. Right.
I'd just like to also note that in the beginning comments, they were saying 202 and 203, and then they went to 101, 102, and 103.
That was a different issue.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just saying the maps
The API issue was predominantly 101, 102, and 103.
It was the NAACP and others that were advocating for 202, 201, but definitely not 203.
Correct. Correct. That's all I have now.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Could I just, I know others are eager to speak, and I use a lot of time already, but I just want to point out that what I heard from the folks that were advocating for 101, 102, or 103 was principally keeping Elk Grove, Vineyard, and Florin together. That could be achieved a whole number of different ways, including looking at, we've been so focused on splitting Ranch Cordova, which no one really wants to do and makes us all itchy, but it could also be achieved by splitting Elk Grove. So I just want to point that out.
Okay, well, let's
And putting it into two, not five.
Let's move to Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. And just, you know, one other thought on that last point, the concerns of the API community, it certainly seems like it can, it can be accomplished, or largely accomplished, without getting as disruptive, I think, as those maps, 101, 102, or 101 or 102, I guess those are the two. So just some of my, it's, obviously, no map is going to be perfect, and everything we do is, has ripple effects. I have the unenviable position, I guess, of being the hole in the middle of the donut here, that is Sacramento County. So just about anything that, that happens around me is going to have a ripple effect in District Three. I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate your comments about Ranch Cordova and their comments, because that certainly is an intriguing map that they proposed, but it looks like, just on the population, that is going to be a challenge. My preference, and I'll just, just kind of reiterate what I had said a couple weeks ago, is that I think that, you know, this whole process, we don't need to make a change just for the sake of making a change. We need to make a change to address changes in population, and to address keeping communities together, just like the concerns of the API community. If we need to make an adjustment to make these communities more cohesive, and certainly that would be my, why my preference would be map 204. Certainly appreciate the comments from Supervisor Serna. I think that if we could do something to make North Highlands together, represented by District Three, I think that would be helpful, rather than splitting up a portion of that community, or at least perhaps the east side of McCollum Park, as Supervisor Serna mentioned. North Highlands and Foothill Farms are both communities that are location for a Black Child Legacy Campaign incubator site. I think that's important to keep those communities together for that reason, among other reasons. They're served by the same school district. The other thing that, again, and I'll just kind of repeat myself, reiterating Supervisor Serna's point, is that that area, College Glen down there in the southwestern part of District Three, I don't know if there is a way to figure out how that could go to either District One or District Two. Again, for purposes of continuity, I think those, those districts are better suited to meet the needs of that incorporated population in the city of Sacramento. And then also, just kind of along the lines of looking at these census designated places, and trying to, again, trying to clean something up, and just not making a change for the sake of change, but to clean something up is that, and a caller made reference to this, this little area to the north of Carmichael that, for some reason, is not in District Three, and it, and it kind of breaks up Carmichael. So that would also be something that I would like to explore, what the numbers would look like to include that in District Three as well, Doug.
What is Glen? I'm sorry, I don't see Glen.
College Glen.
College Glen.
College Glen, it's south of the American River, roughly between, what, Elvis and South Watt. That's, that's all in the city of Sacramento, that area there.
Okay.
And, let's see. And those are, those are my comments right now. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to Supervisor Natoli.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to get the iterative tool up, if we could. I'm going to bear with me, spend a little time.
All right. Let me try to bring it up here.
Please.
I think the folks behind the scenes can bring it. There you go.
Okay, good.
What you're seeing is what I have on my computer right now.
Okay. Well, thanks, Doug. And before I jump in to offer some comments, I just wanted to, again, thank all the folks that certainly have called in this evening and have reflected on both the middle of maps, but also thoughts about communities that they live in, but they also comment on communities that they believe are important for continuity and for other reasons to be kept whole. I think the challenge, and it was kind of evident from the get-go, though, is trying to keep everything whole and make all the other aspects of this work becomes a very challenging task. And so I very appreciate the comments of my colleagues, but certainly all the folks that have weighed in and submitted maps and so forth. I wanted to, before I offer some suggestions and try to get some idea of what it looks like up there on the map, when we last left this hearing, and Doug, thank you for going to Ranch Cordova last night, appreciate you spending that time. You know, clearly, beyond what we heard this evening, though, we've had additional reflection by the city council, the elected representatives of the, of a city of nearly 80,000 people in this county that, from the get-go, was proposed to be divided. And they reflected on that two weeks ago, and then last night, again, obviously, on a split vote, but nonetheless, gave some suggestions as related to how they might, if it was going to be divided amongst two supervisory districts, how they would prefer that to be done. And I understood what you said, Doug, you've plugged those in, looks like the numbers didn't work. And then I also wanted to say, too, as a backdrop here, that District Five has historically, during my decades with the county, lost geography, but also lost population. But every 10 years it gains it back, plus some, and ends up being in a position where there's some adjustments having to be made. And certainly, you know, the vastness of the district, you know, and certainly where there are growth areas, both within incorporated areas, but certainly in the unincorporated area, just provides a lot of opportunity for folks to find a place to live, a place to work. And again, it's been certainly my honor and privilege to have represented that district for many, many years now. But looking to the future here, I guess what I wanted to make one more comment about is that, and there are many neighborhoods. And again, and you start looking at those neighborhoods And again, and you start looking at those neighborhoods, and where they align, hearing the comments this evening about the school district, you know, not odd, but, you know, the Elk Grove School District goes out to Anatolia, along Sunrise Boulevard. And so you have large districts and serving, you know, constituencies that are widespread, and certainly, but there's a commonality when you start talking about, you know, how communities knit together, in addition to, obviously, the comments we heard this evening. So I guess what I wanted to ask, and I appreciate, again, what's been offered here, with what was suggested by the majority of the City Council last night, Doug, you used what they said relative to Districts 3 and 5. If you reversed that and made the adjustment the other way around, keeping the west side in District 5, and moving the east side to District 3 along with Gold River, what would the numbers look like?
Let's, starting from 203, as the council was? From draft 203?
Or you can use 204.
204, okay. Let me go to a different.
Again, I'm not suggesting Supervisor Desmond is in any way agreement with this. I just want to understand, because I think that was what they put forth, you took their, you know, exactly what they proposed, I just wanted to see what the numbers look like.
What just happened is, I just switched programs.
Okay.
I'm going to a map-titude program now.
You're going green.
Where we can actually draw in. The interactive maps that are on our website, you can't draw in. But let's start from 204. And it may take me a few seconds here. Okay, let's go to 204. And I have a blank copy, so we will preserve 204 here, and we'll play with it in a copy, on a copy.
Okay.
So. You wanted to focus on Ranch Cordova?
Yes, and to start with, again, you know, again, hearing some of the comments, well, I'm going to move around the map, and it may take a few minutes here, but I wanted to illustrate right out front with everybody here.
Okay. As I described, my draft map has District 4 containing this portion of Ranch Cordova here, and District 5 containing the northern portions, Mather, right here.
Okay, and so.
Tell me what you want to switch.
Okay, so what they suggested was, they suggested that west of Sunrise would be District 3. Is that correct? That was what you read off?
Yes, in other words, this area right here. You have to start here to get here. This is Sunrise, right there.
Okay.
And that's Eagles Nest.
Just let me get my.
So you want to add these, this area of Ranch Cordova to District 3?
No, leave that in District 5, but coming from Gold River, down, yeah, Gold River, down along the city boundary, from Gold River down through Anatolia and Douglas Sunrise, include that in District 3.
All right. We're going to add to District 3, and we're going to take it from District 5.
Right, eastern city boundary, so you.
There's the boundary right there, so I'm going to take that.
Between Grant Line and Sunrise.
Over here.
Yep.
This part of the city is over here.
Right. You got it.
This is Anatolia.
Yep.
Coming up Eagles Nest. I think some folks call this Aerojet, but Aerojet's up here.
Yeah, Aerojet's to the right of your cursor.
Let me get my. Don't see my pending, doesn't seem to be doing it. Let's see. See if I can get anything. Okay, it's working.
Okay. And while you're waiting for that come up, then your District 4 boundaries, which would take you up to Grant Line Road, just leave that in how that is, but just pull those back, so.
All right, I need.
Landfill, Boys Ranch, Cordova Hills, Easton would all fall within District 4 under that scenario.
I know.
I know, I can't even, I can't understand what you're doing. I hope I can see it sooner or later.
It might help.
I won't go into rhetoric with you, but I'm drawing what we used to call polygons.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to, I'm selecting block by block to fill in the area that Mr. Natoli is trying to add to District 3, starting from the Gold River area.
Yeah, basically, you're just reversing what was suggested as far as the district alignment, but keeping, and keeping what was suggested by the city.
These are very small blocks, so I just have to add them one at a time. And we'll go back and correct as we go along. Just for your information, Mr. Natoli, I think this is about 28,000 people.
Looks about right.
But we'll find out.
I figured about 26, but.
See this, see this right up here?
No.
This is the changes that you're making. You're taking out of three, you're taking, adding to three and taking it out of four in this iteration. And this is what I do all night.
Oh, wow. Are you not going to do it all night tonight, are you?
Not just in Sacramento, I've got about 10 of these organizations that I'm doing this for.
Oh, wow.
I'm going to have to focus in, because I'm making. So I just need to do this right and get close in, so that I grab all the blocks that we're talking about here.
While you're doing that, I was just saying, Supervisor Natoli, wasn't the suggestion to go down Sunrise?
I think it was, yes.
So you're.
You're way over.
You're way over too far west, Doug.
Yeah, it'll make no difference population-wise, something I discovered the other night.
Because of business district?
It's a golf course. There's no people there.
Well, there's a subdivision, something, right?
No, there's people there in those neighborhoods.
Between Sunrise and east, and Eagles Nest, there's no folks.
Yeah, but he's talking about what's.
West of Sunrise.
Yeah, west of Sunrise, where you've got villages of Zimfandale, you've got Deta Drive, you've got some of the Cordova Town Center. Yeah, that area in there, so. Otherwise, your population's going to get pretty bloated pretty fast.
Okay. Sometimes the Census Bureau has some strange boundaries on these blocks, too, so things tend to pop out. All right, what parts have I missed? Here's one up here.
You've got to pull it back some.
Whoa.
Is that what you had in mind, Don?
No, no.
Doug, let me show you right here, on the big screen.
Okay.
Just west of Sunrise, you can continue to be D5.
Yeah.
East, down, like you had here, so you're way over here in Capital Center and so forth. That's fairly clearly obvious. Yeah, so.
Sunrise is.
Sunrise, that's what the city said, so I'm just trying to plug in what they have.
I'm going to guess it's more like 15,000.
Plus Gold River, yeah.
And I thought my geography degree would never pay off. What do you think, what do you think we did back in the mid-'80s?
West of Sunrise goes where?
Stays in District, stays in District 5.
Stays in District 5, all right.
There you go. Ah, you're getting it.
Let's see if it'll let me just subtract using this. Nope, doesn't like that.
Need a bigger eraser.
I know. That's what District R is great for, it has an eraser. Map-titude doesn't have one. If we drew in District R, this might be an easier thing, but.
What's the eastern boundary, Grant Line?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be.
50, right?
And then 50, yeah, roughly 50, because what I suggest is that, you know, as he's doing this, that District 4 would continue to have Marietta, but would come over and take in Grant Line, Cordova Hills, and.
Assuming that chunk is 15,000.
And Easton. Again, just my colleagues, I'm presuming you agree with any of this, I just, again, I'm trying to run the numbers and. Yeah, and for, yeah, yeah. Well, every time he erases something, it adds it back, I'm watching what he's doing up here, Doug.
Yes. Oh, okay. Okay, got it, thanks, thank you, thank you. I was doing this in front of the Folsom City Council for a little while, and they were telling me to stop.
We're thinking it, we just didn't say it.
I know. Census Bureau makes these really small.
Isn't there a stretch polygon function, you can just?
Yeah, but you can't subtract using polygon. You can only subtract by block.
Well, you need to copyright that program, you've used it enough, crime, and you make that iteration, you call it your own.
I know. This company has made a lot of money. Believe me. All right.
Okay.
Let's see how much of Sunrise I've taken out.
And then there's Gold River, you need to, suggest you add Gold River into the mix. Take Sunrise, run it up to.
Gold River was already in 204.
Right.
Was it, okay, that was already in D3, okay, all right, so, okay.
We're proceeding from, this is 204.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and then we're adding this portion of the city of Ranch Cordova to District 3.
Right.
Let me make sure that I've gotten the Sunrise boundary correctly.
That looks good.
There we go. But there's a portion over here that I haven't gotten yet.
Yeah, that last portion going down to Jackson Highway, just pretty unpopulated right now, but they're built.
Right here.
There you go, okay. All right.
This will be a pretty close approximation right here.
Okay.
As you'll see, this is 15,000 folks. So it makes 3, 5.7% over, and 4, 6.7 under.
Okay. And let me ask, while I get that map up, if you maybe kind of bring it just a little bit, so it's not obscured by the legend, I don't know if you can move it over, but, so with District 4, Doug, that area east of Sunrise, including Easton to the north, the Highway 50, you said we could count in future growth, not just planned, but entitled. With Cordova Hills, there's 8,000 units that are approved, there are large lot maps, and so, again, I think it could be anticipated reasonably that over the next 10 years, you're going to see that development come out of the ground. Likewise with Easton, I wasn't able to get the count, but I know it's several thousand units in that Hazel 50 setting. And again, I'm not, you know, again, just not saying Supervisor Frost, she has to agree with any of this, but that there's a potential for growth in both of those areas, they're unincorporated areas, but it'll be, you know, new growth, and it's not just, unlike Jackson Corridor, which are in various stages of development considerations, but they're not even maps assigned to any of that development yet, so.
Are you talking about Ranch and Marietta?
No, this would include Ranch and Marietta right up to Grant Line Road. So you would have the landfill, that area north of Jackson Highway, Boys Ranch, you'd have everything basically Elrodah County Line over to Grant Line in District 4. But I was asking about future growth, because it shows you being low on numbers, or shows District 4 being low on number.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to have lots of growth.
But there's lots of growth, including Folsom. And that area in Folsom, that shows like only 900 people. We know that, you know, since the census was done, you know, housing construction has continued there, so, again, I'm going to ask about some other areas moving down to 50 Quarter, but just for these purposes, so can we consider some of that in the margins, Doug?
You can.
Okay.
You can't consider this, and let me tell you why.
Okay.
Because if you draw a district that has District 3 at 5.7... Because if you draw a district that has District 3 at 5.7 over, and District 4 at 6.7 under, that's prima facie unconstitutional, it's because it's a, it's a combined deviation of over 10%.
Okay, so you had to get, so there has to be some adjustment there, is what you're saying?
Right, you cannot take that many people into 3...
Yeah, okay.
And, and that many people out of 4, because the deviations are, would end up too large.
So, and what's the show for District 5? You haven't told me that number.
I'm sorry?
What's, what does the show for District 5 doing that?
District 5 in this iteration, let's see if I can get it down here. In our, in map 204, District 5 was a .33 deviation.
Okay, but what, and that, that's where we are now, when you've done this?
That, we're working in, in 204, and we have not made any changes to District 5.
Wow.
Because in 204, this side of Rancho Cordova was allocated to District 4.
Okay, so District 5 hasn't lost or picked up anything?
We have not done anything to District 5, because District 5 doesn't come north of Jackson Highway in, in our, in map 204.
Okay. So back to your deviation...
It does on the other side, because this, see this over here? This is all in 5, right here.
Where's your cursor? I can't even follow where your cursor's at. There, okay.
In North of 50, I mean.
Oh, this is in 5, it's Mather, Rosemont, up to the Gold River, Rancho Cordova boundary.
Okay, so back to your deviation, there was a suggestion made, and it hasn't been plugged in here, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Desmond both spoke to the College Greens, College Glen area. Now, that would then subtract from District 3 and add to District 1, and I know you haven't had a chance to plug those in, but that, that could close the deviation between 4 and 3, correct?
4 and 3?
Yeah, you just told me there's 11%.
College Greens between 1 and 3 would add to 1 and subtract from 3, and then you would go up to the North Highlands area and add to 3 from 1.
Okay.
So perhaps, if we tried it out, it would stay within proper deviation levels, because as we can see from this chart right here, in 204, 1 is, is .08 in deviation, and 3 is .85, so both under 1%. So making a 6,000 person change, which is what College Greens is, is, is not gonna have a significant effect on those numbers, especially if you add and subtract in both directions.
Can I?
Yeah, sure.
Just add something, so I'm, I'm looking, Doug, at the census designated places here. It looks like the College Glen is about 8,300, but also in the city is Campus Commons, which is about 4,700.
Right.
So combined, you're looking at, you know, 13,000 right there.
Yes, there's, there, let me get this right. In the College Greens, College Glenns area, it's about 6,700 people. Campus Commons is 13,000. So you add those two numbers together, that's a 19,000 person change.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at this, I guess these numbers, they don't match with, I don't think with what he just said, but I defer to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I checked, I checked that out.
Does that include La Riviera, is that what you're calling one of those?
No, no.
Okay, so there's even more?
Uh, that's right, there is a portion of the city in La Riviera.
Could I? No, La Riv is county. Could I throw something out real quick? There is a way, and you and I discussed it a little bit, and this is not intended to open a Pandora's box here, but there is a way for District 2, if it were considered in play, to come up on the east side of Power Inn and go continue northward, and District, Districts 1 and 2 could split Sac State, Campus Commons, District 1, La Riviera, College Glen, College Greens, District 2. Of course, then District 2 needs to be within its standard, or its deviation, so...
And if I could add, not to get too much in the mix here, because I hadn't moved south, but I do think there's a way, potentially, if that were, became problematic, to add back some of the vineyard area back to District 5, you could pull back to Bradshaw Road. I mean, we heard the comments this evening, it doesn't get the entirety, but, you know, you could go from the area between Excelsior to Bradshaw, include some growth area there. So there may be a way to make some adjustment along that, that area where Vineyard, Florin, and, I guess, a portion of South Sac, largely Vineyard, Florin come together, where you can make some adjustments there, same school district, same margins, we heard. One last comment I was gonna add, that as a part of that mix, there was a piece that was in play in 204, and Supervisor Serna addressed it, but it was the area, Florin to Gerber, from basically South Watt over to, to Power Inn. And in that area, again, you know, you could align, obviously it lines up with District 2, it's where, where 2, 1, 2, and 5 come together, here in the community of interest, but that, again, you know, you have that finger that extends out, you could shrink that back and/or adjust it, and certainly keep population straight, but try to, you know, move some of the, the community that was of, of concern, you know, closer together. It doesn't obviously achieve what folks put forward in some of the, the public maps, but it, you could do some adjustment there without, again, throwing populations out, there, there are small enough segments there to, to align with, so...
What I try to keep in my head is, is, is when you take out, you have to add.
Right.
Assuming you're starting from a, from a balanced position.
Right.
Take out, you have to add, and then if you take it from somebody else, you have to add to that one.
Right, but, but Phil's suggesting is that you take, you run District 2 up. If you did that, then I'm just saying, if you need to account for that in District 5...
Mr. Serna suggested going back to the, basically, his, the original line of his current district, and that would make both districts balanced.
Right.
The, I, I think it's Vallejo Way?
Yes.
On the south side of District 1, that would be the southern border. And then going back over and undoing all the craziness I did in, around Franklin Boulevard, then undoing what I added to Mr. Serna's district in the Power Inn area, because that would, that would make it, that would go back to the, the Florin boundary, rather than Gerber boundary.
Correct.
And Mr. Kennedy's district would be the same.
Can I ask?
As it is currently.
So, so mind if I ask this question, so you can't do the Vineyard, Florin, and Elk Grove, maintain those all three in District 5, and still accomplish what Mr. Serna wants to accomplish?
I don't think so.
Is that right? I mean, it doesn't seem like it.
I don't think so.
Phil, your opinion?
No, but no one's mentioned this at all tonight, and I know, I would thought that Supervisor Intoli might mention it, but there, there was, there seems to be, the way the phrasing was, especially from the public that expressed concern about wanting, and understandably so, Elk Grove, Vineyard, Florin together, they currently aren't together. There was, the, the phrasing was that, don't separate as well. They're, they're not together now. So I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying it's a, it's an observation.
And in keeping Elk Grove together, you got 200,000, you have a block of 200,000 people, and I think there were examples, both within the city of Sacramento, certainly within the school district, but within the city of Elk Grove, where a number of the folks referenced, obviously, some of the elected officials there, who, you know, I think reflect the, you know, interests that, that they would advocate for, and, so again, Elk Grove is a chunk.
Here's what they're suggesting, okay? I can try to illustrate it with just this hand, hand tool right here.
Okay.
Elk Grove, Florin, and Vineyard. Just draw a circle right around there. You'll end up with 317,000 people approximately, which is your, your ideal population, and it's about, I would estimate, 35, 36% Asian Pacific Islander total population. And the voting age population is also very similar. So that district right there, taking 200 people out of, out of District, 200,000 people out of District 5, we would have to find 200,000 people for District 5, and that would be probably back into Rancho Cordova at least. There's only 80,000 people there, so it, it would, it would have to go well beyond that. Then District 2, this would become District 2, basically, right here. That would be District 2. And District 1 would fill in, and District 4 would occupy the northern part of the city of Sacramento.
I have some thoughts.
Okay, can I just, one other thought, Madam Chair, I'll turn to you, I don't want to dominate the time here, but, again, I appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah.
The last thing I wanted to comment on 204, just moving south, was that you did make the adjustment for the town of Freeport and the regional sanitation lands, which keeps all of the delta together, and...
Yes.
I wanted to just acknowledge that, because I know that was focused on the last time we spoke, so...
Yeah, and I, I actually proposed to take a block out of an area close to the, the treatment plant, so that it doesn't appear that District 2 comes down like this.
Okay.
There's this one silly block next to the treatment plant that says, it, it, it looks like it's trying to incur into, into the Elk Grove area.
Okay, all right, anyway.
Nobody lives there anyway.
Right, exactly right. So, for now, I appreciate, if you could just sum up for me then, what are the numbers, what you just showed, making those changes, so I can make a note here, so, what are the, give me the numbers for all five, of all five districts.
Okay, we haven't made any changes, so all I've, all I've outlined is that, is that portion of Rancho Cordova...
Right.
East of Sunrise Boulevard.
Yeah, okay, so give, can you give all five district numbers then, please?
All right, I'm going to hit the do it button, and then we're gonna see what the numbers come up as, okay? Or do you want just, just the District 3 and 4 numbers that I gave you earlier?
No, I want them all, please.
You want them all, okay, here we go. Kaboom.
Does that take Easton out of D4, Don?
No, no, it keeps it in there.
Hold on.
Yeah, it would keep Easton and some of, some of that East Borough.
Hold on.
And this does not include the changes that Mr. Serna suggested, nor the discussion about College Green, College Glen, Campus Commons, but...
This is just the change that you made in Rancho Cordova?
But you couldn't make the changes I suggested, and it would have no bearing on this at all.
Exactly, that's why, so you can plug those in, you may, we ought to before, you know...
Okay, I'm gonna read you the, all of the numbers now. District 1 stays at .08 deviation. District 2, 1.43% deviation. District 3 would be 5.73 deviation. District 4 would be 6.76 deviation, and District 5 would be a .33 deviation.
Okay.
That, that is, that is not illegal.
I, I get that, between 3 and 4, but you haven't plugged changes in that Mr. Serna suggested, nor Mr. Desmond, because I, I was the one to ask you to put the map up. You could put those in, and you could actually refine that before we leave here this evening, so we have a good idea, so I'll, I'll leave it at that right now. I know Madam Chair wanted to speak, but I think there's some suggestions here that might allow us to get this, you know, narrow down to some degree, so, thanks, thanks, Don.
Okay, so I actually had a map that I was gonna show, but I, first of all, I want to say that I, I was good with what Supervisor Serna stated. I, I like the ideas that you have, Don, although it doesn't... I'm just wondering if, if we made some adjustments to what, what Don suggested. I'm gonna... I'm gonna pass out my map so that you can see it, or maybe I'll just add to what Don said. First of all, I want to say that one of the things that I was thinking about was Rancho Cordova, how they were okay with splitting Rancho Cordova, but they wanted to do it between District 3 and 4, and so the, the ideas that I had in, in my map that I was working with had placed Rancho Cordova in District 3 and 5.
5, District 3 and 5, it was in 4.
Between 3 and 5.
Yeah, they wanted 3 and 5.
There, there were a lot of comments that came in from Rancho Marietta, and they were very specific about some of their concerns. The Jackson Highway urbanization, which is in District 5, the Grant Line intersection, which is in District 5, the connector, which is in District 4 and 5, Scott Road, which is shared between 4 and 5, the landfill expansion, and Good Neighbor Enforcement on Jackson Road is in District 5. An application for 795 homes is in District 5. There's a traffic signal for Stonehouse Road in District 5, and the sheriff support, which works for Rancho Cordova, is in District 5. So they are advocating to stay in District 4, but by putting them in District 5, they actually, they actually are, are in the district that has all those things that, you know, concern them, and at the same time, potentially isolate them, or, you know, whereby, you know, they could have one person representing them. The only thing that it, it wouldn't do for them is, right now, they have two seats on the consumables CPAC, and mainly because a lot of the decisions that are made there impact them, and if there was a way to keep those two seats so that they're in that, you know, that they have a voice in, in those decisions that are being made, putting Rancho Marietta into District 5, and possibly shaving maybe, I don't know if Supervisor Desmond would be... Another thing I want, I want to comment on is the Fair Oaks and Orangevale are like Rio Linda, Alberta. They're very connected, they have the Orangeville-Fair Oaks food bank, so I don't know if you'd want to shave off a small portion of, if it was, if the population didn't work out, take a portion of Fair Oaks or Carmichael, just to help the numbers even out. The, the map that I had come up with had an idea about dividing Rancho Cordova and D3, into D3, but not into D4, but it was also trying to solve some of the problems that Rancho Marietta has expressed. So I don't know if that's, if those numbers would work out.
You did share your map with me just prior to this meeting?
Yeah.
And I think I could focus in a little bit and try to illustrate what you're, what you're, what you're saying.
My map is different than what Don came up, but what Don came up with was fine, so we could work off of his, is what I was thinking.
Well, your map, let me just show you, tell you what your map shows, the, the one that you passed out earlier to me. This, this portion of Rancho Cordova right here would be added to District 3, then...
You can just show, you can show my map, we can show them my map, this map.
Can we, can we do this overhead thing?
Just need to place it there.
Just right here.
Yeah, just place it there.
It was a takeoff from the 204.
Here we go.
And I, and I'd also made Rio Linda whole, so that it could go into D4, but it kind of left 1 and 2 untouched.
I'll describe your map, and then you can tell me if I'm, if I'm misdescribing it, okay? This portion of Rancho Cordova is added to District 3. This portion of Rancho Cordova is, and Rancho Marietta is put back in District 5, which is...
Yes, the solid black lines define the changes.
Right.
The big solid black, not the small solid black.
District 4 adds a portion of Rio Linda here, and... I don't see any other additions to District 4 on this map.
Isn't this...
Am I wrong?
Yeah, no, it, it gives Gold River to District 3, it...
Right, with, with this portion of Rancho Cordova, right here.
And then the idea was there's a notch of Fair Oaks... And then the idea was, there's a notch of Fair Oaks that goes up, if you needed to even that out, by just giving that notch to, Orange Vale and Fair Oaks work together, whether they're in different districts or not, so, I don't know that anyone's, would mind, but...
Well, I would mind.
Okay, you want, you want to keep Fair Oaks?
Yes.
And, and you want to keep Carmichael whole?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, the numbers may not work out, but then they might with Don's ideas, yes.
Supervisor Frost, did, so the way I understand this is that both Ranch Marietta and a good portion of Ranch Cordova, south of 50, would stay in Five, or would go, go to Five and stay in Five. Did you, did you look at the numbers? Because it seems to me, my first inclination is this puts Five way over, or keeps it way over.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, it, it took, it took some of the higher popul, some of the northern part of Five, and put it into Three, so, I'm not sure if that compensated for it or not.
Problem we're trying to solve is, is an underpopulation in your district, District Four, and my, my draft 204 did that by adding this portion of Rancho Cordova, right here.
Could I ask a question, Madam Chair? So, Doug, if you've got four districts in alignment, and, say, District Four, under whatever scenario, was it five or six percent, you're still okay, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, it could be for any district, I just used that, because again, under what I had suggested, without making other changes for District Three and One, District Four was at 6.3 percent, I think is what you said.
The bottom line is, is you have to add your, your highest...
Yes.
Positive district, and your, your highest negative district, those two together is your total deviation, it must be, it has to be, but less than 10 percent.
Okay, and, and why, I find that helpful, because, you know, obviously, Sue, Supervisor Frost has suggested something here, but, we know there is a significant growth area, Folsom, Cordova Hills, and Easton, all approved developments, in different stages, that will, you know, certainly begin to, continue to populate District Four, so, if you were at 5 percent, and including, and kept Marietta down to Grantline Road, and I appreciate what you said about consistency, although I think certainly District Four would have all those elements, if you came over to Grantline Road, but, if you could bring in alignment, the others, so you didn't get to a total 10 percent deviation, or beyond that, then you could certainly make the legal determination regarding that, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so that, again, I find that, that pretty helpful, kind of going back to what I suggested with Ranch Cordova, again, recognizing we're just playing with numbers here this evening, but, I don't want, getting intrude on the Chair's time, I think it would be useful, though, if you could plug in, before we leave here this evening, what's been suggested by Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Cerna, and, and any adjustments to this, so we could get, get a sense about how far, or how close, we might be with some of the things we've talked about.
Yeah, to see if we can get within the deviation.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I just want to go on record as saying, I, this is very hard, but I'm trying to look at all sides of it, I'm trying to respect my colleagues' desires for their district, and at the same time, find ways to solve some of the expressed concerns over time. My district, Rancho Marietta, they know they have Don and I both, he's represented them, and I have, so, they, they have two friends over on that side of town, but, and they would, they still would, if, if I didn't represent them, I'd be like Don, I'd be a friend of Rancho Marietta. The point I'm making is, they are, they have concerns about being isolated, and about all the growth, and about the progress, and, so, I'm just thinking...
But they want to be with District Four, is what they said, though, right?
Pardon me?
They want to be with District Four, that's what I...
They, they said they want to be in District Four, however, they stated all their problems, which I summarized, and...
Yes, I heard you say that.
That puts them all, puts them together in, in one contiguous district, where they're represented.
Yeah, we'd bring, bring District Four over to Grantline Road, and, but you would then, you share that with...
I don't know how they'll, how they would feel about that, but...
Well, I think Mr. Merchant's map actually showed that, again, reflected coming all the way over, actually, to Sunrise, I think.
Mr. Birch?
Merchant's, John Merchant's...
Oh, yeah, John's...
Yeah, brought it all the way to Sunrise, but I was just suggesting Grantline, so, anyway.
I'm just saying, you had a population issue that you were trying to solve, and so I thought that could solve that.
But you need more, yeah, I don't, I don't need, District Five doesn't need more, you need to hold on to some.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
Is that right, Doug? Under the scenario, District Four...
District Four is short of population, yours is, is too, overpopulated.
Right. Okay.
Can I ask a...
It's about 30,000 people.
Can I ask a clarifying question, where we're at right now with College Glen? Because I got confused.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm confused, well, I, I don't know, you know...
We can do that real quick. If, if Mr. Cerna and Mr. Desmond would like me to do it, I can do it on this little...
Can you do it quicker than the last one?
I know, it's nine o'clock, we've been here for 12 hours.
Oh, gosh.
One question while you're doing that, though, because again, the suggestion was trying to keep Rio Linda and Alberta together, or, and I think her map reflects some of that, I don't know if that gets out of sync with any else that's been suggested this evening, but I think that would, on the northern end, I think you could align those communities, and make that change that you've shown there, Supervisor Frost.
Yeah, I think...
Okay.
One area of agreement, I think, we put to bed.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
You mean that little area west of McCollin?
Yeah, yeah, that's what...
As well as the one east, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, Supervisor Desmond, my definition of College Glen, College Greens, is Wad Avenue, this area around Folsom, over to...
Your map's not up.
Jackson Highway, and, and Highway 50.
Doug, your map's not up.
Oh, we're on the wrong map, we have to switch maps. If we could switch back to my computer, please, there we go. I would like to say one thing, real quick, your technicians have been excellent, your technical people are excellent at, at the workshops, and here, it's been really helpful to have, have this kind of ability to, to do this.
You hear that back there?
If we could go to my computer, please, here on the, on the dais. On the lectern.
Kevin, can you do the other screen? Where they were doing the interactive maps? Kevin, can you hear me? Can we go back to the interactive maps? Want me to knock on the door?
There we go, all right, thank you, thank you, all right.
The other consideration would be, I could keep Gold River if we, if that would help the population.
So this takes 6,700 people, a little more than that, from Three, and add it to One. I'm going to hit, I'm going to hit go. Now, exchange for that, we're going to go to McCollin. I'm going to add to Three now.
Is Rio Linda already drawn into that?
This portion, this portion right here is Rio Linda.
Is that already...
And this portion right here is North Highlands.
Okay, so, Rio Linda's not drawn into Four, in that?
This is the current line, and this portion of Rio Linda is not currently part of District Four.
Can I just say, could you do that from Freedom Park Drive, north?
You mean the trade with District Three?
Yes. That's where the rest, because that's where the residential starts, on that side.
I see Freedom Park Drive, so I can do that right now.
It's on the east side.
On the, yeah.
Yep, there's Freedom Park, right there.
Yeah.
So I'm going to add to Three, from District One.
Mm-hmm.
It's not going to be too many folks, there's, like you say, probably about 800 folks here.
485, actually, is the number.
That's, that's the northern boundary of the Highlands, right there?
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
Elkhorn.
I'm going to hit go. And we'll look at the numbers here. One is 1.9 over, and Three is 3.75 over. We can't come up with a full devi, a correct deviation, because we have that change we made in Four, down below.
Well, and this doesn't, doesn't include some of the suggestions, changes I've, I've presented in the south part of District One, so...
Right.
Don't, don't focus on deviation for One right now, because to me, it's not relevant.
Would you like to deal with the parks next?
The parks?
The parks, Curtis and Land.
Oh, well, I mean, you can, but I've kind of done it for you.
Okay, we'll, we'll just assume that Vallejo is the southern boundary, and we'll...
Does move the stuff into Rio, into District Four, though?
No, it didn't do that.
Well, just do that.
No.
Yeah.
Should Rio Linda go into Four?
Yeah, that's what I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah, I think Phil was okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that now.
Should be 1958.
From One.
No, you're too far west in that one parcel, one area.
Too far east, maybe?
No, yeah, too far east. May not make any difference, though.
1958?
Yep.
Yeah, that's 1958. The boundary of Rio Linda goes like this.
Yep.
Right there.
Yep.
So I'm going to hit implement. Okay, Four just got some more folks.
Thank you, Phil.
I wanted to ask you, though, Doug, did you, back to the eastern part of County, when you had the bigger version of the map, I'm not so sure you plotted in District Four, did you do that? It was the base map, so it stayed in?
Um...
East of Grantline, I know Sue suggested something about moving that line up, but, if we use, so that's all counted in, population-wise?
Let's see, in this...
Yeah.
Currently, the only, the only part of, there's a, there's a, this is non-contiguous, I don't know why that is right now.
No, that should be in District Five, yeah.
Here's the current district boundary in Four.
Yeah.
And you added this portion of Rancho Cordova to District Four.
Well, it's...
You suggested it.
Consumna Community, yeah, all the way down to Jackson Highway, and retaining, and retaining Marietta, and it retains Marietta. You retain Ranch Marietta in there?
Yes.
Okay, but then that green portion, that are sliced further to the west, that needs to come into District Five, there, yeah.
That gets added to District Five?
It stays in District Five.
Okay, yeah.
And it's not in District Four.
Correct.
So it's showing in District Five?
I, I don't know, I don't know why it shows it non-contiguous right now.
Yeah, that's...
You have a lot of sharing arrangements there, you'd have to travel out of District to get to the district.
I'm okay with doing the rest of the changes I've suggested, but, I want to be respectful of the lateness of the hour, too.
I know, I just wanted to clean that up.
What if we move Gold River to, back to Four? How, how many are in Gold River?
Well, I, I think that's a problem, because then District Three, it would not be contiguous from District Three down.
Yeah, he used, we used Gold River to go to this portion of Rancho Cordova, but I don't know that this is something that we all want to do yet, that's just a, you were just checking it out.
Right, but, but that non-contiguous green portion there, that, that piece right there, that has to go back to District Five, you can't have that in...
That's correct.
Okay, so you're going to take that out, and then I think Phil wanted to get the other changes plugged in.
You want to go south?
But... We could just have you go home, you said you'd normally do this all night, and so we could all go home and go to bed, and you'd sleep it.
See, I took the suggestions you, you all gave me last time, and I came up with this, and it didn't work here.
Oh, yeah, I know, it was close, though, it was close.
No rationale for it, that's all, that's all.
So, because of the, because we've got to be done, basically by December 7th, we need, we need to decide who gets what.
Okay, you're not going to let us go home until we decide.
What, what we need to change, and then you can, you can, you can tell me that in, in general parameters, and then I can come back tomorrow, and, and show you, or, or we can do it all right here.
What do you think will work?
Let's do it now.
Let's do it now, we're here.
Yeah, let's just do it.
Okay.
We're going to do with you all night, all right.
Can I ask a question, Supervisor Cerna, before he goes south, since we're still in this area up here? So the area of College Glen, there's still a, a big portion of the city, and then there's also La Riviera, so I don't know, Supervisor, entirely what you think about putting La Riviera, since it's south of the river, unincorporated, see what that might look like?
It used to be District Five until, until the last, or, last redistricting, yeah.
Putting La Riviera in D5?
In D5.
So you take it over to Wad Avenue versus La Riviera, versus Folsom at, at Mahew Canal?
Right.
I don't know what it does with the population, it's pretty good, it's pretty sizable population in there.
Yeah, we're talking about right here, College Greens, I mean, I'm sorry, Campus Commons, this area, and then this portion of La Riviera, when I counted it up last time, I think it was 13,000 people.
That's the city portion, what he was asking me was, he was asking about east, east of there, yeah, there...
Yeah, east of South Wad, is La Riviera, south of the river to Mahew.
This, okay, I don't know the, the, the numbers on that, can figure them out real quick. I could throw it off pretty good, probably.
6,000.
It is 7,180 people.
What were your suggestions, Rich, that you then pick up something else, you'd lose that and pick something else up?
I, I was thinking that, yeah, District Five, I mean, that would obviously help, you know, equal things out, but I was just thinking of the river being a southern boundary over this, on this side, there's also city area there, too, but that might screw up the population numbers too much. the population numbers too much.
Yeah, that's the 13,000 issue that I mentioned. This is 7,000, and then this portion over here would be another 13,000. That's the college, I, I call it common, Campus Commons.
So what are the over-unders right now, if you took that?
The question would be, what, what would we add to three if, if that were taken away from one?
From one?
I'm, Campus Commons, I'm sorry.
Taken away from three, what would you add?
Three, we'd add it to one, or...
Or five.
Yeah, it would, after one.
Or five, I thought it was.
Then five would be coming over like this. Taking in Campus Commons.
No.
No, no, no.
Just, just write what you have, that pink block you're showing right there.
You want me to run with it? All right, here we go. Now, now that looks like that.
But you still have a portion in there of District Four that's divided by District Three, and on that west side of Sunrise, you gotta clean that up by Mayther.
Yeah.
Yeah, that needs to come out of there, you gotta make sure that the, otherwise it's on. And that includes Independence of Mayther, I believe. No, it doesn't, I take it back.
Can we, can we put Sac State and Campus Commons following the city boundaries into one for the time being? And see what it looks like, and then make the changes to the south I've suggested, that'll give us an idea of deviation, and if it's not within the, the 10, then maybe that's where the conversation starts about District Two possibly coming up on the east side of Power Inn to help balance that out.
And I did offer that, you know, pulling a portion of it back into District Five, from Excelsior to Bradshaw, and I think that was shown on one of the iterations here. Again, I don't know how Supervisor Kennedy feels about that, but he would, unless you wanna, you wanna retain the...
Again, it's, you know, not making a decision in a vacuum.
No, no, I know that, yeah.
You gotta see what the impacts are everywhere else.
That is a very ugly city route line right there, so I'm gonna try to follow it.
What, the northeast corner of Howland Fair Oaks, right?
Did you take Rancho Cordova, then? Let's see. So this divides Rancho Cordova between four and five?
No, between, between three and five.
So you took all that, you took all of Rancho Cordova, you took all of Rancho Cordova and put it into Ranch Cord, into D5, right?
No, three and five. The, the portion of Rancho Cordova from, from basically Gold River, crossing the freeway, falling Sunrise all the way to, to Jackson Highway, and then back up Grant Line, would be in District Three, following the city boundaries.
Okay, that's unincorporated, then.
No, it's, it's incorporated, it's all incorporated.
Yeah, you're just talking about the incorporated.
Looking for the city boundary, there it is.
So the unincorporated is, would be contiguous with Gold River, right?
The unincorporated what?
Well, I mean...
Yeah, let's fit, let's try and compartmentalize what we're doing.
Okay, I won't, I won't. I just wanna ask Don this.
Sure.
The incorporated, there's still some contiguous with Gold River to D4, if they have it unincorporated.
It does touch, right?
Yeah, it still touches, yeah.
At the Hazelner chain.
So that's a possibility.
Okay, what I've, what I've selected here does not exactly follow the city boundary, because the city boundaries, the, the blocks go over the city boundary.
That's fine.
So I've, I've selected the blocks that don't go over the city boundary, and it's 17, let me find the population number, here we go, I was right, 13,300, 400. Added to one from three.
Yep.
Here we go. And there's some, there's some blocks here along the freeway that I didn't get.
That's way out of whack now.
Yeah, it's not working.
That's why I'm saying that, that whole Campus Commons, Sac State, College Glen, College Greens, city portion of La Riviera could be split between Districts One and Two, just to hit the deviation numbers. Yeah, one and two. If two were to come up, on the Power Inn, East of Power Inn, as I mentioned earlier.
Hasty little blocks. Okay, what's the next exercise?
Go south on the District One, put Upper Land Park back in. Please.
Power Inn area?
I'm sorry?
This Power Inn area, or is that...
No, 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 go, go west, Upper Land Park.
Upper Land Park, okay, here we go. The red line you see is the current district lines?
Correct.
And the, those...
You can simply, you can simply do one contiguous polygon if, if that makes it easier to do that.
I will do my best.
Yeah.
Okay, this goes from, this goes to one from two.
Should be 96, 45.
There it is, 95, 24 is what I got, but we'll, we'll go back over towards Vallejo and make sure we got it all. Yeah, we didn't get it all.
We got 344,000 now?
It's because you added all that stuff in Campus Commons.
There you go.
Okay, and then lastly, take out Gerber, the extension. Please.
I'm gonna add that two, I'm gonna add this portion to two.
I have 46, 36.
You are correct.
You should know I'm honest, huh? So this'll give us a good picture, Don, of...
One is a little over now, because it has all that Campus, Campus Commons stuff in it.
What's the, what's the deviation, I can't read the numbers here.
Two, 22,000 currently.
Three, 322?
22,000 currently.
Over?
Over.
Okay.
District One.
What's the percentage deviation?
That's 7.1%.
Okay, that's pretty far over.
On the Campus Commons thing.
And where are the other districts?
Well, again...
Just percentage-wise, just, I can't read your, I don't know, all the numbers.
Two is even, three is under by 2.7, four is currently over by, under by 19,000, and five is over by 6,000.
I think if you give me back Gold River, that's probably the right number for four, and it is barely...
Gold River, as I recollect, is around 8,000 people.
Oh, well, get me a Waze back.
It will get you to about 11,000 under instead of 19,000 under.
But then how do you get...
Can we do that? Can we try that?
How do you link three?
Yeah, to Rancho.
To Rancho. It wouldn't be contiguous at the moment, because we added all that Rancho Cordova portion from Gold River southward to the third.
It's not where four meets, as much as where three, but where three.
It is contiguous to the unincorporated portion, there's a sliver.
To four, yes, Sue, but not to three, you can't get from three to there, that's how you, how do you get down to three, that's the point. You can get four, you're right. Maybe blow that up, Doug, so we can see, I know what she's referencing, but you, you touch four, but you don't get three.
Mm-hmm.
Won't I touch three through Gold River, once it's switched?
You're not going south, D3 is going south.
Oh, wait a minute, that's, see, this, the yellow line is the, is the district as it's currently drawn, and it goes south like this from Gold River. I'm sorry, shouldn't use my finger, we'll use... This is not an apple product.
I guess if you, I guess I'm thinking, if you, the, the line is where the yellow is, right here, okay? If you look at the unincorporated portion, it's contiguous with Gold River, if you switch Gold River over to D4, D4 is then connected to D3. Is that what you mean, by contiguous?
But then D3 can't get that portion south of the river, because there's no con, continuity there, that's, that's the problem.
Yeah.
You, you then interrupt...
Oh, I see what you're, oh, you, you can't take another sliver of, okay, you can't take another sliver...
You could take a, you could take a sliver of Gold River like this.
No, I mean, further past Gold River into Rancho, but I don't know if that breaks into Mayther or something else.
You're using Sunrise Boulevard as your demarcation. Doug, could you clean up that piece in there, though?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to figure out what's going on here. Let me go to this block.
If you go to my map, the map I gave you, Doug, it shows the, the area that we were gonna switch to D3 that was D5. You could go past Gold River to connect to D3, to clean it up a little bit.
Something's not adding up here. Okay, that's District Five there.
It is District Five?
And this is District Thir. This also shows it in District, yeah, the, all, yeah, I need to make sure that this is, for some reason, this is, it's showing a line around it, meaning that I must've clicked on some block somewhere.
Why don't, oh, no, yeah, no, you can't.
Let me see what happens if I... Yeah, this shows it in a different district right now. So, let's see, that's Sunrise, that yellow line is Sunrise.
Yes.
So I'm gonna put all of this in District Five. Do you want me to do that now, or do, it's gonna take a little while?
What if you just switch D3, the D3 and the D5, just flip them?
Flip them?
Well, I mean, what if, I mean, what if you...
When I made the mistake earlier of going west of Sunrise, this is, this is when I inadvertently added this part to District Three, it now, it belongs in District Five.
Okay.
According to Mr. Natale's request. So let me...
Again, trying to line up with the city of Rancho Cordova that I asked for, but it's different districts, but keeping those pieces together.
If I can get in here.
Thank you for the sandwiches, Flo.
Really?
You're welcome.
I'm gonna have to do that one later. Okay, here we go. All right, I think I've done it. Nope, I haven't. Okay, so the line is Sunrise, so let me try to illustrate.
Can we see the whole map?
Yeah, sure.
So that we can get our bearings?
Okay. What Mr. Natoli had me do is add this portion of Rancho Cordova. I'll focus in on it to District 3. And there's some blocks here that we haven't added yet, but they're just freeways. It's the freeway, it's just zero, there's zero blocks. So, he suggested that District 3 go all the way down like this, east of Sunrise. And the Anatolia area has now been added to District 3. In terms of... It's still 8,000 short based on all the other changes we've made to it, but basically taking away Campus Commons. So, four is under by 30,000 in this, in this... In this, because that's the population that Map 204 added to District 4 to make up for its shortage. Am I misconstruing, Mr. Natoli?
No.
No. Yeah, so we have to find 30,000 folks for District 4 in this, in this iteration, which gives Eastern Rancho Cordova to the Desmond District.
Okay, if Rancho Cordova areas west of Gold River move to D3, the rest of Rancho Cordova moves to D5, and Gold River goes to D4. And that should balance it.
Say that again.
If Rancho Cordova areas west of Gold River move to D3, the rest of Rancho Cordova moves to D5, and Gold River goes to D4, that should balance it.
But then you...
That would take away more people.
And you still have a very gerrymandered peninsula which we're trying to rectify.
Okay, so...
Did you hear what...
Ms. Frost just said to add this area, right here, to District 3. And then Gold River would, we would re-implement the arm. It would go into, four would come in like this and take Gold River.
I would rather explore looking at North Highlands, revisiting North Highlands to go to District 4.
Yeah.
Well, what I was suggesting, move the rest of Gold River to D, to 5, which would surround Gold River with D5 and eliminate the contiguous issue, right?
Let me eliminate the contiguous issue right now because it's all those damn...
So, Rich, you were suggesting to go back to, visit North Highlands?
Well, if we go back and revisit North Highlands...
With D3, D4?
And I'd rather not split it up. I think if we could keep it together, move that to D4.
Okay.
See what that might look like.
I'd be interested in that.
And then on the south side, with Supervisor Serna, maybe just making the river the boundary, and I keep, I mean, I don't know, just to try to equalize it a little more with you, Phil. What do you think about that?
Yeah, sure.
Unless you have another idea.
Well, the only other idea I had, I'll repeat it again, is if there's any interest by District 2 to come up and...
Take more of the city.
Yeah, because, remember, this balances out District 2 based on the changes that I've suggested.
Can we take a look at the North Highlands?
What's next?
North Highlands.
Take a look at North Highlands and see what that would do if you moved North Highlands into D4?
Didn't we, did we do that?
No.
Oh, I see. Okay.
We're talking about this right here. The first thing we would get would be Foothill... I'm sorry, what's it called? Thank you.
Yeah, you leave Foothill Farms where it is, but just take North Highlands out.
You mean come like this from this direction?
That's not contiguous, is it?
What is with District 4?
It can be.
Yeah.
This is Citrus Heights, right here. So you would come take North Highlands like this, like right here. There's a southern boundary right there of North Highlands. Oops, didn't mean to do that.
Well, no, North Highlands also goes up east of, west of Roseville Road.
That's correct.
Yeah.
If I take the streets off, I could show you North Highlands.
Okay.
Doesn't that mean that District 3 loses part of, or all of Foothill Farms in the process, though?
I think there's a way to draw it without that happening. Let's see, I'm trying to look at... Oops.
Won't let me hide it. Took all the names off, but I didn't take the actual streets off. Okay, now you can see the North Highlands border a little better. This is the Foothill Farms border, right here. North Highlands border goes like this.
You think?
Yeah. I mean, well, that's cleaner.
See what we're currently dealing with.
It's cleaner.
It is cleaner, yeah, you're right.
District 4 needs 30,000 folks. Foothill Farms, I don't think, is that big.
It's...
Info.
Well, it would bring you much closer to the deviation, though, because I think it's still about 30,000, isn't it?
Foothill Farms has 33,000 people. That surprises me. That would balance District 4 at this point. And then District 3 would be under by some 40,000 people.
Oh, my.
Based on what we've done so far. And District 5 has the current overage. So that would be Rancho Cordova. So what the suggestion of Draft 204 was, to make up the overage in District, the underage in District 4 by adding those 30,000 people in Rancho Cordova. Basically what Mr. Natoli just assigned to District 3.
What about Foothill Farms and North Highlands? Oh, no, that...
I'll find out for you how much North Highlands is. Foothill Farms is 33,000 people.
It wasn't 30,000, it was more along the lines of 15,000. It was 12 and 13 to 2
The total population of North Highlands is 42,600.
So...
Well, I have a lot of growth. I thought we could, but not that much of a difference, I guess.
So where we're at, does District 3 need to find some? Is that right?
Where we're at right now is, District 3 is 8,600 short. District 4 is 31,000 short. And District 5 is about 18,000 over.
Okay, so let me, one of the things you added back in...
Oh, wait a minute. District 1 has 22,000 over because we added all that Campus Commons stuff in.
Yeah, and I was gonna go back to the La Riviera area, which has certain commonality, but you added that in. If that went back to District 3, that was about 9,000, right?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest is, just in terms of what District 1 would or could assume moving east, just keep it to campus, to Sac State and Campus Commons. Everything else stays in, stays in 3.
Okay, let's see what we can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it'll help the deviation in 1 right now because then 7+ and...
And it would reduce the deviation on District 5.
May not be enough.
The shape of D3 is okay. I mean, it seems kinda odd.
All right.
Is it okay to have an odd-shaped district like that?
What am I adding to District 3 at this point?
La Riviera.
This area right here? Okay. We put it in District 1, so here we go.
Did you already add Foothill Farms to D4?
No, we did not do that.
We just talked about it, okay.
Supposed to be 3. I must be in the wrong area. That's the wrong area of La Riviera. We're talking about this area here?
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, this is, this is the College Glen area, right here?
Right, that's why I said...
And then this part of La Riviera, we're gonna put back in 3. But not Campus Commons?
No.
Okay.
Campus Commons, Sac State would go to 1. So we don't get all the way there, Rich, but part of the way there.
You are fast.
1,300 so far. I need the streets back. All right. That's an artificial line there. So now I'm gonna go to... Tell me what street that is. Oops, see that? So am I going, do you want me to go all the way to Howe Avenue?
Yeah. Wherever the city boundary is that demarcates that side of Campus Commons.
I've got 3,500 people so far. Next would be the college town area. Or should I go south? See what this is.
Right.
This is that college...
Right, so I'm suggesting that would go back to D3.
Okay.
Just because the numbers seem that far off.
That's a nice area.
See what that block did? See, that block goes all the way over to Howe Avenue.
Is that a remnant part below it, the south?
So far, we've got 10,000 people, which would certainly solve the District 3 overage and make District 1 about 10,000 over instead of 22,000. I mean, yeah, 12,000 instead of 22,000.
And what's the deviation for 1 at that point?
It would be about 4%, between 3 and 4%.
Within bounds?
If I get this right. There it is. Okay.
Can you back out a little bit, Doug, so we can see what that looks like? So that's basically splitting that incorporated area south of the river, pretty much, right?
Mm-hmm.
A little too far. There we go.
I think this is 0 here.
Now, how do you deal with District 4 deviation?
Did you give up on the north area?
You suggested Foothill Farms would fix it, right?
It would. Get pretty close.
Just before...
Right, and then District, then 3 would be out of whack again.
Oh, 3 is perfect right now?
Yes. And as I suggested earlier, if we did the Foothill Farms thing, District 3 would have to go get some portions of Rancho Cordova.
What if we took...
More portions of Rancho Cordova than we've already assigned to it.
What if we took the, that little knot, that little notch off of the top, just that little notch right there off of the top of Fair Oaks? It's probably not very many, but... What do you think, Rich?
That's about 3,800.
About a square mile.
3,800 people.
How many people, how many people do I need?
Currently, you need about 31,000 folks.
Well, she doesn't need 31,000. She just needs enough to get the deviation within 10.
That's correct. 31,000 would get her to 0.
Well, how many do I have to have?
At least 20, maybe more.
So Fair Oaks, Carmichael, northern part of Foothill Farms?
What about, what about new Foothill Farms, Doug?
Let me move over there.
That would be the...
I mean, I don't know what else to think of.
That's the area north of I-80. Foothill Farms area north of I-80.
Where's I-80? Here we go. That's this, that would be right here. And what did I say Foothill Farms was?
What is new Foothill Farms?
Foothill Farms is pretty distinct between the old and new Foothill Farms area. Part of Foothill Farms north of I-80.
I think that's about, gosh, that might be close to 20,000.
Mm-hmm. There's a clean line that goes along Elkhorn.
Okay.
That would be logical to my district.
Okay, would you like to assign that to District 4?
Sure, let's try it. Sure, let's try it.
Hey, Rich, when they added La Riviera back in, you know, we took it all the way back to the existing boundaries?
I think we'll have to go back and look at it. I'm...
You need to go back to the Mayu Canal if it goes back to the original boundaries. The current boundaries.
Yeah.
Because if you stop at Watt Avenue, then it basically, it would look like you moved it back over, but... Once you do this, take a look.
It was only half of it, is what you're thinking.
Well, I think we just did the part in the city because of the adjustment with D1.
Okay.
I think. That's all we looked at so far.
Okay, so if there's some other adjustment, we can do it, go back there.
Does that make sense, a good division, the new part versus the old part of Foothill Farms?
They are, there is a natural kind of division in the, in the community.
Okay, that is 15,697, which if added to four would take care of half of her, of her, her underpopulation at the moment. And it would make it 5% under, and three would be 4.5% under.
Pretty close.
Would the rest of La Riviera, well, so you still need more for me, basically, is what you're saying?
5% in our total deviation at that point, yeah. We'd be, we'd, we'd still be over 10% total deviation because five, district five currently has five points, 18,000 too many people.
Okay, so you could give some of La Riviera back to district three, which would then take...
And then give me more of Foothill Farms? Is that what you mean?
This gives you Foothill Farms, what you see on, on the screen right now, or a portion of it.
New Foothill Farms.
Just a portion of it, right?
Mm-hmm.
So both, so both of us are under?
Yes, and it would make three under, and you would still be under.
So if you give him all of La Riviera, how does that, does that fix him?
About, what, about 7,000? It would fix him and it would take me down just about, almost the right number for district five.
Do you want me to hit the go button on this?
I have mixed feelings about this. I mean, I feel like we're really carving up district three, you know, because of the Rancho Cordova thing. And, I mean, this is certainly what I did not want to do, is start dividing these, these communities. But I don't see how, how else we can make this map work without doing it. I'm open to other suggestions, but...
Let's leave this here. Can I take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
I'll leave this just as it is.
What are we?
Reset for five minutes?
This meeting is back in session, and I'm going to go ahead and, if it's okay with everyone, we only have one person on the phone for public comment, and they've been waiting very patiently. We're going to go ahead and take that public comment, and then we're going to close public comment for the night.
Okay, can you please transfer the caller? They may need just a second to get them out of the queue. Did you, did you, well, okay. Uh-oh. They aren't answering. She can hear them talking in the background. So could we just give her a second? They've been waiting this whole entire time. They probably have the phone down.
Yeah.
There we are, okay. Hi, caller. Thank you so much for waiting. Please start with your public comment.
Hello?
Yes, thank you for waiting.
Okay, wonderful. My name's Sonia Lewis, and I am a community activist who has been listening for the past hour and a half to the shuffling of communities and divvying out of what could potentially be a great impact on the future and the next 10 years in our county. And I think that it is so imperative, as you all do this, that it not be a cavalier or just... I, I feel the greatness that you all are putting into this work, but I also don't want it to be something that is just like fly-by-night. We need to get this done, and we have to hurry and get this done, because there are communities that need to stay connected. Communities like North Highlands, communities like Rancho Cordova, communities like, but not limited to, the connected communities, even if we don't see them as connected, Elk Grove, South Sacramento, and Vineyard, for example. That community in particular, if you divide that particular community, it means that you will be dividing two critical ethnic groups, and, and that being the API community and African-American community, to a huge degree. And so I would just ask, as I'm sure other callers have made public comment tonight, that you take close, critical consideration to just the severity of impact it will have if you divide these, these communities. And when I say divide, I mean it will, one, dilute our, our power and our voice and our vote. And so that's of most importance to us as we do this work. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes your public comment. She was the only one.
Thank you.
Okay, Doug, I guess we're...
Did you want to close public comment at this point?
Yeah, I thought, yes, we do, we should close it. I thought we did.
We did.
Okay, thank you. And Supervisor Desmond did have a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, I, as we're going through this process, I certainly appreciate Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Natale trying to work through this. I just, I feel like I'm breaking faith with my constituents. I'm sitting here trying to justify why we should, you know, split up Foothill Farms. Well, you know, I don't want to do that. And I feel like I'm, we're, I'm, we're really breaking up, we're really affecting district three substantially and the constituents there. So district three can go into Rancho Cordova. I mean, I, I think it's a much, we have a much simpler solution by just having district four take that part of Rancho Cordova, and then we can keep the continuity of my constituents in district three. And, you know, I'm, I'm not going to support breaking up Foothill Farms. I'm sitting here looking at it, really wrestling with my, my conscience, so I'm not going to support that. And I don't see another way we can get to the numbers that we need unless someone has another idea.
I agree with that.
Who said I agree?
Just to be, just to be clear, I want to make clear that I was never suggesting splitting up Foothill Farms. I was simply kind of responding.
No, but I was thanking you and Supervisor Natale for helping, you know, working through this. And so I'm real, this is really, really affecting me here, and I just, I know we're all struggling to find a way to stay within the deviation. And so I'm open to other suggestions, certainly.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Supervisor Natale.
I would, I would just say that, and again, I'm appreciative, and, you know, I'm, I'm not advocating for splitting up communities, and certainly not Foothill Farms or other communities, but I'm going to bring it back, and, you know, maybe it brings us back to where we started this evening and the struggle we're having, and I know we're late hour, so... But the city of Rancho Cordova is the only city that's being split, with the exception of the city of Sacramento, obviously because of the population. And, you know, they took it to heart after we had a, a hearing two weeks ago, went back, looked at it, you know, and obviously their, their council was, was divided in its most recent transmittal. But again, the conclusion, at least the majority of the council was, representing nearly 80,000 people, that, you know, they could accept along the lines of what they suggested. Obviously, it's still our decision, so again, I'm respectful of the process we're in here this evening. But they made it very clear about, you know, what their preferences were. And they are, under any scenario we've been looking at, going to be, not any scenario, some other, you know, some of the public maps have kept it all together in, in one or the other districts. But that's a real serious concern. And so, you know, maybe it brings us back around to what we're grappling with here this evening, and, and the population is what it is. But as much as certainly my colleague, district three, feels strongly about it, I feel strongly about finding a way to honor, again, it might be a flip from what they suggested, but to, to keep, you know, the, the city within that realm. And again, I know if it were to all stay in district five, then that presents a whole different scenario as it relates to some of the other unincorporated communities. So I don't know if there's, you know, possibility, and maybe something we sleep on this evening, or this morning when we get there, but that, you know, looks at some other ways to address that. But again, I have to just convey that. You know, I've been given the good fortune of representing a community all my time on this board. And again, you know, my time will come to an end here in another year. But to divide a city of 80,000 and to have them, the majority, accept that, and then to kind of leave it in a shambles, I just feel a great responsibility to try to figure that out, as I do some of the other comments we've heard this evening about communities of interest, and certainly all the things that go into this. So, and again, I appreciate that Doug's tried to lead us, you know, to some, you know, some points for, at least guide us to some points here. But I respect what my colleague in district three says, and so if the inclination is, or, you know, not to go south of the river because of the numbers, I don't know what that leaves us, but I think the council was pretty clear. One, they preferred ultimately not to be divided at all, but secondly, indicated their preference. So I'm just going to leave it at that for right now.
Okay, and Supervisor Kennedy?
Okay, just so I'm clear on this, Supervisor Natale, so what you just said in a nutshell, it's late, so I'm having trouble following, is that your first priority is to keep it together, right?
That was, again, the first priority was...
I'm just asking you, though, is that your first, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what you just said.
Yeah, well, what I, what I said, Patrick, so let me be clear, that, again, the council relooked at this, because again, as we left the meeting two weeks ago, and so they reconsidered, and, you know, now have come forward and saying that they could accept, you know, a, a division of the city, but I think they looked at it from the standpoint of where services are, where maybe growth in the community, I don't know what all went into their thinking, but they made it pretty clear. So that's the majority of the council. So, you know, that is the most recent, and I think the most current iteration. Again, if we could keep the city together, that would be, you know, probably, you know, better. But I think that the council came to a conclusion that, recognizing the struggle we were having here at this board, trying to figure all this out. So again, I could, you know, accept along the lines of what they, but, but I don't want to outside those parameters very much, because again, I think that they went, they had to go a long ways at their council to get to where they were, what they communicated us to this afternoon, Patrick, so...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just trying to understand, because, because I thought what Rich was maybe suggesting was that, and I'm, I'm looking at 204. I know we're on a completely different map now, but, but is that that one section that's in five currently would go to four, and then you would have the entire city of Rancho Cordova together, but you, you don't support that, because you want some of it in five.
Well, they said very clearly in their letter that they wanted...
I know, we have to vote today, so...
No, I know, but I'm saying what they said is they wanted it in district five or district five and three. That's what they said.
District five?
Five and three, that's what they said.
Or district five?
And they were willing...
Thank you, Don, that's the clarification I needed.
Again, I'm just trying to communicate what they...
Thank you, I appreciate that. I see.
I'm sorry, see, you started to say that.
Yeah, I, well, I'll let Supervisor Desmond speak. I thought there was wisdom in maybe sleeping on it because of the late hour and the fact that we've been here for, I think, 14 hours.
Well, and I'll, I'll say, yeah, and Don, you know, I know you, I'm kind of have gone sideways on you now, because we've been working at this for, for two hours, and that's why, you know...
I know.
But I, I just really feel like I'm selling out my constituents in my district, and I'm really struggling with that. I mean, so, yeah, I think sleeping on it would, might be a good thing. I mean, it would have been great if we could have hashed out something tonight, but if there's any other ideas, maybe that I'm, I'm not seeing, and how we get there with the deviation, Doug, or anyone else, I don't know.
Okay, Supervisor Serna, and then, and then you, Supervisor Natale.
So, but to that, to Mr. Desmond's last statement, I think you've articulated clearly your interest in keeping Foothill Farms together. But quite frankly, we haven't heard too much about some of the other communities in district three, maybe further, further east. And is there a different dynamic there? Is there a different thought process from you in terms of those communities being in play? Supervisor Frost has talked about kind of the, I don't know, I don't know what the exact name of the community is, but it's the part that juts north of Fair Oaks.
The problem is, my district is low also, so it can't come from me, because then...
No, 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 I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that it would come from three and go into four, so it helps you.
Oh.
But, but what I'm getting at is, is we heard clearly some of the rationale on his behalf that I think we all respect and note, and as well as we do for Supervisor Natale, but we just haven't heard about some of the other district three communities that might, or could be, or should be in play. I know we'd all, I know you want to keep it all together, it's understood, but this is the nature of some of the districts being more out of whack than others.
Yeah, right, but district three was not one of the ones that was real out of whack at the beginning of this thing. I, I would say this, when it comes to the unincorporated communities, I think to split those up actually does more of a disservice than it does an incorporated area, frankly, because I think having that, the continuity is, is more important in some of those unincorporated areas. I think Fair Oaks, I mean, you were talking about Fair Oaks. Fair Oaks is, is a, is a community that was placed in district three just 10 years ago. We've heard public comment from folks in Fair Oaks that they want, they want to stay in district three. And, and that little sliver that we identified, I think that's only like 3,000 or 4,000 people. So I don't, I don't think that makes much of a difference, or enough of a difference for us.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There was a point earlier in the evening, Doug, where we were at all things in account, whatever map we had before us, maybe you recall, you're pretty good at this, where we were at about 11, 11%, a little more 11% deviation. And we were fairly close. And as we looked at different changes and so forth, but I think it did take into account a number of the suggestions that came early on from supervisors, didn't divide communities. Again, what version that was, but we were, again, we were still out of, you know, you made it very clear, we, we still need to be within a 10%, but we were fairly close. You had three districts that were, you know, within the 1 or 2% range, and then you had district four and five, I think, I was over 5.8 and...
There was a 5, 6, one was a 5 and one was a 6, yeah.
Yeah, right, and, and we were fairly close.
I think it was after we did the, where that, the Rancho thing came, where we took the area east of Sunrise and added it to three.
Okay, but again, and, and then we did, we did a lot of jockeying after that, so I don't know if you could, you know, maybe, again, just to start out tomorrow, we could go back to that where we were pretty close. There were still areas, obviously, of discussion, and we went through those, and as it moved on, we got further and further apart. and we went through those, and as it moved on, we got further and further apart with some of the, you know, it was what you play with all night long on these things. But that was a version where it took into consideration supervisor's comments, because we've all gone across the dais here, and we were within a, you know, we were within, you know, reaching distance of getting to that 10%. And so I guess I, wherever we were, if you could get us back to that point, might be a good start point for tomorrow.
You see what's on in front of you? You want me to cross this out, right?
Yeah, he's not happy.
Okay, that's not happening. All right, let's see where we are.
Did you save all that as we went through?
Yeah. I don't think this program has that. It used to, when I was in the legislature, it used to, but it doesn't seem to have it anymore. Anyway, here's where we're at. If you can see these numbers at the top of the screen-
Nope.
My cursor's on them right now. Like we said, 1 has a few too many, 2 is just fine, 3 is just fine, 4 has not nearly enough, and 5 has too many.
Scroll back up, please.
Yes. The reason 1 has too much is because we gave it some, it still has some campus commons in it that used to be in District 3, and we didn't compensate for that completely.
Would you, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I note that it's under 4% deviation, so just in the interest, if, it doesn't sound like we're going to get there from here tonight, I would like to suggest we still keep that area in play to keep flexibility, maintain flexibility for whatever changes around the edges, or whatever happens tomorrow in terms of, you know, I think we're beginning to focus in on the real challenge here, which is the Rancho Cordova question. So I'd like to suggest that the changes made to District 1 at least be somewhat memorialized tonight, so that we can have that place to start with for version 205 tomorrow. I don't know how others feel, but-
I don't know how we can memorialize anything until we-
When I say that, I mean, just have a place to start from.
Yeah. If you look at your screen right now, this is the only change we've made to District 1 at the moment. It took this area of campus commons from 3.
Oh, that was in 3 before?
But it's not, Doug. You made changes in North Highlands, you made changes in Rio Linda, you made changes in the South part, so.
Yeah, there's 400 people in Highlands, and we took your current district, 1 and 2 now has the same boundary that it had before.
Right, except that this is a deviation for District 1, that's all I'm suggesting.
Yes. So the problem is over here.
Yeah, it's easy to tinker between 3 and 1 and 2, it's District 4 is the biggest challenge.
So can I ask one other question? I was just focusing on the area, Doug, there, where 3, 1, and 5 come together. I'm sorry, you're right on, I just want to, I just want to point out something that-
3, let me find this area, right here, I think.
Yeah, that area, yeah. And I guess my question being that if there were some adjustments made, and we still have to look at the communities that are affected, but if District 5 and District 3 and that area got down to a, you know, a 1%, I don't know if that's possible, maybe a 2%, but then we could narrow it down, because then you get, with District 4, you're still at 9.99, but you, if you whittle that away, you can get, you can get pretty close, you can get to 10%, because everybody else is, would, you know, either right on spot, but your maximum deviation, because right now-
By doing what, sir?
Well, I didn't, I'm just saying, looking at that area there, we have some commonality of, if you could reduce, District 5 is still out the most with 5.78%, right?
Yeah.
If you got District 5 closer to the target number, you know, if everybody else was right at, right on spot, 9.9 would be fine, right? If everybody was right on target.
Yes, but it kind of sticks out like a sore thumb.
No, I know, I get it, I get it, but I just, again, I'm just throwing out ideas here at this late hour, so.
But you're right, but then it would only take maybe a little bit of change with District 4 to get you much, you know, closer.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to, is, again, and still keep communities whole, you know, recognizing what we're struggling here this evening, and without, I'm not going to offer anything more to tinker with it this evening, but I just, I put that out there because you can get it, narrow it, and I still think you're pretty close with that, with that map that you're looking at there. Okay, that's all I have.
I wonder if we, can we come back tomorrow, can we think about it tonight and tomorrow morning and come back tomorrow with some fresh ideas?
Hopefully, and let me make a suggestion, and I apologize for putting it this way, here.
Can you give more of Rancho, since, can't you give more of Rancho Cordova to District 3? That would solve their number.
Well, and it would, then the District 5 number would change it, obviously, so, anyway.
I thought 5 was over.
5 is over, yes.
By 5.6% or 7%?
Yeah, so wouldn't that help?
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe-
Here's what we've done so far, as you can see, this District 3 has a huge little, not little, a large arm coming down into this side of Rancho Cordova. The original draft suggested, along with keeping Rancho Marietta in District 4, that that be in District 4. And then District 3, obviously, still retains the parts of campus commons that it already has. So those are the, that's the messing around that we've done. So District 4, just thinking overnight, District 4 needs people. And in its current configuration, the first place it can go is into this portion of Rancho Cordova that we had just assigned to District 3.
Why don't you give the other side of Rancho-
The other option is Northern Sacramento, which I don't think we want to go there, or move this around, continue your movement that was made 10 years ago, pass Rancho Marietta towards the southern portions of the county. And I don't know if Mr. Nativoli thinks that that would be a good idea.
No.
No. So that's the situation.
What if you switch and give District 3 the other side of Rancho Cordova and give this side of Rancho Cordova to District 5? That's what I was trying to say.
The District 5 would have an arm that looked like that, going north.
No, District 5 is-
And then 3 would have to pick up, what was this, 20,000 people here?
Yeah, about 20,000 or 30,000, yeah, in that, north of 50,000, about 30,000.
Would that balance District 3?
It would balance, yeah, it would balance. But again, again, it would look just as ugly as the current version, only in the opposite case.
Yeah, but it would fix the, fix 3, and then we could try to figure out-
Where does 4 get to pick it up, though, Sue? That's the thing.
Well, North Highlands isn't enough, so, and you don't, you don't want to go further south, the other side of Rancho Marietta?
You have to go really-
Well, you, you know, you will tend to-
There's nothing down there, there's nothing down there.
Population-wise, you're talking about hundreds and a few thousand, you're not-
Well, then I could take back Gold River, that would be a couple thousand, and I could take North Highlands, and, well, you don't want to give up North Highlands, or, no, that's, in Phil's district, or is it your district? Phil only has a small sliver of the residential.
He has 400 folks.
Can we at least all nod yes on the two areas by McLoughlin tonight, and start at least with that understanding? Seems like there's agreement on that.
Yeah.
I think we should, well, you know, I, what do you guys think about switching, flipping the, that would still keep it in 3 and 5, it would just flip it?
You could flip it, but I thought that Doug started out the evening saying it didn't work because of the numbers, but, I mean, if you want to show that again, I'm, you know, I'm just talking about-
I have the impression from Doug, it could fix 3.
What I just described as not working was the totality of what Mr. Sander was talking about last night.
Yeah, okay.
He may not have meant it in that way, and I don't know if he counted the numbers himself, I think he did.
I think he did.
But when I took his description, and I put it on paper, it did, it was not close to being an equal, a balanced district. So we'd have to ask him what he intended and what he actually meant.
Okay.
But just looking at the situation now, I think the problem, the problem is pretty obvious. District 4 needs people, and the only places to go, as I suggested, are west, towards the airport, south, towards the rest of the rural part of the county, or this Foothill Farms, North Highland things we were discussing a few minutes ago. And that's not, I think, those three options are not acceptable to some people.
Or District 4 Rancho Cordova.
Or, as Map 204 suggested, taking about 28,000 people and adding them to, from Rancho Cordova, and adding it to District 4.
Or you could give up part of District 1, you know, there's a lot of population there anyway, it seems like it could be a small area that you could, I don't know how you feel about that, Phil?
I have no clue what you're talking about, what part of District 1.
Well, where campus commons is, there's a whole lot of population there.
That's what I've been saying all night, is that I'm perfectly happy to, you know, let's have a discussion about that being in play.
You'd be willing to give up part of that?
I don't have, it's not in there now.
Pardon me?
It's not in District 1 now.
It's currently in 3.
No, I'm saying, outside the line of this existing 3, there's, in District 1, there's some areas. No?
No, I still don't, I'm sorry, I respectfully don't understand what you're-
Be added to what, I'm sorry?
Pardon me?
What are you suggesting that a portion of District 1 be added to?
Well, La Riviera and campus commons, he took, he gave away that, and then he took back half of it, so you could take back the other half and a little more out of 1, because 1 has too much, right? Or is 1 perfect?
No, 1 didn't start with, is my point. Didn't have, 1 doesn't currently have campus commons, Sac State, La Riviera, College Glen, or College Greens. All I've done is suggest-
What's that area that he's pointing to right now? I thought that was in 1.
That is campus commons, it's currently part of District 3.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We assigned it in our little exercise here to District 1.
But the bottom line is that it doesn't affect District 4, the problem with the deviation is with District 4, so that doesn't solve any of our problems with District 4. Not directly.
Okay, well, Don doesn't want to give up any of the rural county, and-
I just think it's natural for that, again, you get in communities of interest where folks, you know, are-
Rancho Marietta expressed a desire to stay in 4, I think that's very clear.
What if you gave north of 50 more, more of, you know, broaden, or either flip them or broaden the amount of Rancho Cordova that you give to 3, and then 4 can try to move toward, well, you have North Highlands, so Phil doesn't have a large portion of North Highlands.
Foothill Farms is the first area that you hit if you're moving the boundary of 4 south.
Yeah, Foothill Farms is the logical-
So let me ask one other question here, maybe this helps, just thinking of that. So if, if Gold River were to remain in District 4, obviously it dislocates the portion that we're talking down the Sunrise Boulevard, but that's about 15,000 people.
And you flipped those, too?
Yeah, I'm not saying flip, I'm not saying flip anything, I'm just saying that if you kept that in, if you kept that in District 5 but gave Gold River to, Doug, you moved Gold River to, retain it in District 4, and District 3 stays all north of the river, doesn't have a Gold River, it would add about a little less than 15,000 to D5, would add more to, and there might be some give on that, you know, on that western flank that we're talking about there, where we might do some alteration with, you know, District 3 and District 5 if there needed to equalize it. Again, I don't know if that throws it way off again, but you would, then, you know, you'd add some more to 5, I'm about 5% out under the current scenario, so I don't know if there's a way to do that, maybe some of the other adjustments, so I just throw that out, maybe that's a way to keep Cordova together. And it accounts for growth in District 4, if you can get that, within that deviation, so.
You're, you're basically saying-
We make a policy choice of keeping District 4 short, assuming it gets portions of Rancho Cordova that are going to develop.
Right, exactly. I mean, I'm going to start from that premise, where we know there's known growth, and you got Folsom growing, Easton, and Cordova Hills, so I'm-
It's on the chart.
Yeah, yeah, so that may be something to think about this evening.
You folks know more about this than I do. If you look at the current portion of Rancho Cordova that's assigned to District 3, which I know is Anatolia, because I go up and down Sunrise, we all do, where is the development? Where is the development?
Well, Easton's in the unincorporated.
Easton is Folsom?
No.
No, it's unincorporated.
It's between this, yeah, were you, if you got your map there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it-
This area, right in here.
Hazel Avenue is the defining line, I think, to the unincorporated.
Hazel is north of the freeway, so.
No.
It's this area in here.
Yeah.
In my mind, I call that Aerojet.
It's Aerojet property, but it's Easton Development, Glenboro, Eastboro, Westboro.
It's unincorporated, though, there's, there's no sphere, formal sphere there that I know of.
Cordova Hills, here, approved.
Uh-huh.
8,000 units. And then you have Folsom.
That's already in 4, though.
Right, and we're-
He's already got that drawn in before.
No, I know, we're talking about future growth.
We're assuming growth.
The future growth that you've got potential, if you come up short, that was the point, if you come up short, then you can account for growth, that's not just planned, it's approved.
It's a ton of growth going in, over there.
So it might be worth considering.
South of 50 and there.
Mm-hmm. So 9.9 is what I'm looking at, and it's, it doesn't look good to me.
Okay, well.
Could I ask one other procedural question? We've got the schedule tomorrow, we have to have it done by December the 7th, but if we get stuck, we have the ability to, I asked this of Ann yesterday briefing, it sounded like it was a week ago, but whether we have the ability, if we needed to call a session, not necessarily on Thanksgiving Day, but call a session before December 7th, if we need to keep working on this, I'm hopeful we could get there, but I'm just, I wanted to point that out, so.
It can't be between the 20th of November and the 28th of November.
Okay, got it.
We could do a special meeting, but I just, can I just describe something, Doug? Could you give, like, this part to District 3, between the 20th, and then, or give more of this to 3, so that you have a contiguous line to 4, to give Gold River back to 4, that's a small amount, but do you hear what I'm saying?
Yes, I hear what you're saying.
All-
All north of 50 or something like that, that's Rancho Cordova to Three.
About 30,000 people, I think.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't know how many people are there, but it's, that's, that's...
It's a cleaner line.
It's clean, it's pretty densely populated, we'd have to check that out, see how many would, and then undo this, Madam Chair?
No, well, I was thinking if you just flipped them, it might, the numbers might totally fix Three. That's what I was trying to say earlier, if you just flip and make the left side Three and the right side Five, but if, or you could just cut it off at the Highway 50 and see if that fixes the numbers, isn't it?
That might be too many, but we could check it out.
And then give...
So, how does that, how does that improve the District Four deviation?
Give Gold River back to Four.
So, you get Gold River, and, all right.
Gold River and this portion.
And I could take the residential of North Highlands that fills, it's only a few hundred, but I don't know.
That's fine, I won't support that, so if the will of the board is support that, that's fine, but I will not support that.
You will not support that?
What, the Gold River or the North Highlands?
Oh, no, keeping everything north of Highway 50, taking, making the boundary there Highway 50.
Oh, no, yeah, okay, I get it.
Oh, you don't want that much of Rancho Cordova?
No, because I think the ripple effects, once you plug in the population, I think the ripple effects are going to cause District Three to change in other areas. And again, it's being the hole in the middle of the donut, I mean, it's affected by every decision that's made.
Okay, well, I don't have any other ideas. I think we need to think, sleep on it, it's almost 11 o'clock. Well, I mean, we could have another special meeting if we have to hammer this out, right?
We'll get there tomorrow.
Yeah. Are you all good with adjourning for the night, and...
Madam Chair, I do have something to address before you guys adjourn. You could continue this to tomorrow at 2:00 PM, which is when it's scheduled for anyway, since you're not done with the discussion of this tonight, you have that option as well. But I do still need to talk to you guys about Item 33 before you adjourn.
I thought our meeting tomorrow was at 11, oh, it's at 2:00 PM that we bring this up.
I'm just meaning you could continue this item to 2:00 PM, it's already scheduled at 2:00.
Okay, I'm sorry, and you need to talk to us about what?
Item 33. I think I asked you to continue this to 12:08, and I did that in error, it's actually Tuesday 12:07 when you guys are going to be talking about your consent matters. So, Item 33 was the Housing Authority item where you were discussing the compensation and benefit recommendations for unrepresented employees of SHRA and amended personnel rules. You continued it, I wrote down 12:08, I can't remember what I said, but I meant to say Tuesday the 7th. On the 8th, you're not taking up any consent matters, they just need to continue to the next consent calendar, so I made a mistake. It should be 12:07, so I'd like to just put it on the record that it'll be continued to 12:07.
We need to move for reconsideration, we're still in session, so we do...
Some moved.
Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah, we have to reconsider it.
Move reconsider, I second.
So, I've moved it, he seconded it. Vote.
Please vote.
And then you need a motion to make the continuance?
To 12:07, please.
Some moved.
Unanimous vote.
Second.
Thank you.
And we have a...
You need, you've voted?
Another vote to continue...
Please, for your current item that you're talking about now. Sorry, I didn't mean to throw you guys off. Continue this item to tomorrow, right?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's already on the agenda.
Time out. Thought we had to reconsider, now we have to vote on the principal...
Yeah, I thought you just did, you said...
Vote to reconsider is to bring it back to the board to then have another vote, right?
To continue, and I got the same vote, it was, you voted...
We didn't punch it up again.
Oh, I'm sorry. You just punched it up once. It's been a long day.
Sorry about that.
You're going to have the same outcome, you're going to have the same outcome, but there you go.
I'm sorry, I'm tired, I'm sorry, I apologize. Unanimous vote.
There you go, same outcome.
And we do have County Executive would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair Frost. I just want to remind you that if we, if you're thinking that we need to schedule a special meeting, it could only happen on Thursday or Friday of this week, as Supervisor Kennedy just said he's not going to be available after the 19th. So, those are the only two possible days if you needed a continuance.
I can't do it in the evening on Thursday, but I could clear my day, but I can't do it in the evening on Thursday.
Well, that's good to know, I guess that's sort of, we have it available to us, though.
I can do it.
We had to do it, you know, Friday.
I can clear both other days, they're packed, but I can clear them. Okay, well, maybe tomorrow we'll resolve it, and, right?
Maybe Doug can work some magic.
Yeah.
Does he have enough? Doug, do you have enough to play with when you go home here?
I'm checking my schedule right now. You know, my Thursdays and Fridays, my Thursday and Friday is okay.
If we need it.
Yeah, we can meet both days if we have to, I guess.
May I ask, tomorrow at 2:00, is this the only item on that day?
No, we start at 11:00.
Oh, okay, so it would be 2:00 to whenever?
Yeah, whenever.
I don't like the way you say that, man.
Whenever is a good way to put it. I'd say that's very accurate.
Believe it or not, I just got a text from my wife, she must, she must be watching at home.
So funny.
May I ask, I'm sorry, can you please help me understand what days are you talking about for the special meeting? I thought that there was a noticing requirement, so I'm a little bit confused.
Oh, I think we better schedule it just in case, right? What, with 72 hours?
No, there's a five-day noticing requirement, so...
Yep.
Yeah, so, I'm not sure what days you guys are talking about, I'm not following.
Well, we can go late tomorrow, I mean, we can work until we're done tomorrow.
Sounds like that's our only alternative.
Something will have to give, I guess.
Or somebody.
Yeah, we've got five stubborn people here. Okay, okay, so, we're going to go ahead and adjourn for this evening, we can't...
Hold on, hold on. We still have comments by Board members and...
I know, I know, I know, but, I know, I think I'm tired, too.
No, I just said adjourn, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, okay, so, we're, I think we're, we're going to finish this item up and bring it back tomorrow at 2:00 PM.
You want a motion to continue?
I don't think we need to continue it because we're coming back tomorrow anyway.
Already noticed.
It's already calendared. And so, our next item on the agenda?
It's Item 47, which is County Executive comments.
Tired.
I know, me too.
I have no comment, thank you.
And Board comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I know it's late, so, this was intentionally going to, this was originally going to be a longer set of comments, but I am going to very intentionally make it brief. It's just become very clear to me over the past couple of years, quite frankly, and certainly more intensely over the last few months, that there seems to be a real logjam of sorts that I'm hearing from various interests in the development community, especially the home building community, when it comes to our water agency. And I'm not bringing this up to scold or wag my finger in the direction of that agency necessarily, but it is too consistent a message that I'm hearing from, again, especially home builders, and the amount of time and frustration that they're encountering with various entitlements that are in the charge of our water agency. And I think it's high time that we direct our County Executive to look into the matter. I'm not sure at this point how best to bring it to a place where we can discuss, or should discuss, changes in policy, procedure, added resources, personnel, what have you, whatever's needed, but we say time and time again, almost at every single board meeting, the importance of housing, the fact that housing is so damn expensive in our, in our county, in our community, the shortage of housing, the fact that that has a bearing on homelessness, and all the other implications that the housing shortage has here and in California. And it's very frustrating for this Supervisor to continue to hear about what I believe to be very real tangible impediments to producing more shelter for constituents that need it. So, I'd like our County CEO to please look into that, and I don't know if others have similar experience or concerns, but I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, really briefly. I have to say that I agree with Supervisor Serna, I hear the same comments regularly. It is frustrating when so many of us sit up here and talk about the shortage of housing, and then we can't get out of our own way. I think this is a good time to have this conversation while we're also talking about fees, you know, but this particular department is the one I hear from about the most, and I would even suggest that the County CEO convene a meeting of people in the industry and help and find out what practices are done elsewhere that are allowing them to build more houses. It's not just lowering fees, that may be a part of it, I think it is a part of it, but there's more to it than that, and we have to get to the bottom of it. We have a housing crisis, and I think some of it's self-inflicted. So, thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Serna for bringing this up, and I echo Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Kennedy's comments. I hear about you and I, and we've had many discussions about this, hearing about it again and again and again. It's kind of like a broken record, and it's not only the fees, it's the process, it's interpretations that are least favorable to the applicant on every occasion without any room for critical evaluation or flexibility, certainly. And that word gets around, and that's what's most troubling to me, is the reputation of Sacramento County is really, as a difficult place to do business to me, is really spreading from what I hear in the industry. So, I would certainly welcome a discussion and an evaluation about this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see no further members in the queue, and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.